Okay, thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn, sorry, I'll take a motion to close the executive session and to reopen the public meeting. Is there a motion? Trustee Kay, Second Trustee Goleo, all in favor? Meeting will come to earth. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and a prayer by trustee Goleo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As many of you know, there was a terrible earthquake that occurred recently in Nepal, 4,600 dead and climbing, 9,000 injured. It really is a good time for all of us to recognize how fragile life is. And we look around at what we do on a daily basis, really focus on what's important to your family and friends and community. Let's take a moment of silence and remembrance and prayer for all those affected by the earthquake, Amen.
Thank you, Vic. That was beautiful. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Village Hall. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, April 28th. Just a couple of quick notes here. Trustee O'Donnell is excused from tonight. His neck is acting up a little bit, so we're hoping he rests up. We know he's watching on TV tonight, so get better, get better, Jeff. Couple of notes here. We're going to start off with courtesy of the floor, so if you have anything to, that you would like to address the board at, at that time, we'll recognize, I'll recognize you, come to the mic, state your name and your address. I'm not giving the outline here. And then try to keep your comments to three minutes if you can. We appreciate that. We'll have a couple of presentations that we'll get to after courtesy of the floor, which we'll explain. We also will have two public hearings tonight, which we will be taking public comment on, and I'll explain when we get a little bit closer there, how we'll work them, and then we'll get to matters requiring action after the, the public hearings. I will note that action item number four is, consider a motion requesting a home rule law for a residential parking permit system for certain streets. I will take, I think there are some residents here that are a little concerned about that item, and we will take comments at that time, when we get to that, that item, and we'll explain what it is that we're considering. We're not going to be taking any action tonight. We're looking for some input, and we're really looking to really set a public hearing on that particular item. So, again, we'll explain more, but we'll, I'll allow some comment if any residents have concerns about that. There'll be plenty of time to, to talk about that and explain it in a public hearing that will be set sometime and scheduled sometime in the future. Okay, so courtesy of the floor, anybody care to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judith Doolan Spikes. I'm a resident of Five Braced Terrace. I'm here tonight to pass along some information that I hope will be of interest to you. I have been appointed chairman of a new committee that the Historical Society is forming, has formed, that has its purpose to keep an eye out for proposals before any of the village boards or elsewhere that would have an impact on heritage views or vintage structures. And our mission, our charge is to keep an eye out, to report to the Board of Trustees of the Historical Society, anything that might so impact, have that impact, and then the Board of Trustees of the Historical Society will decide if there's anything proposed that the Historical Society would want to either advocate for or against. Thank you.
Great. Good luck with that, Jean.
Any questions?
No, that sounded pretty straightforward.
There will be details released later, but that's basically it.
Great. We'll look forward to hearing more about that. Thanks, Jean. Anybody else care to address the board at this time? Yes, sir.
All the comments regarding that item.
Yeah, that would, yeah, if that's what you specifically want to address.
Certainly, yes.
Okay, great. Anybody else care to address the board? Okay, great. Thanks for your comments. We'll move to presentation number one. This will be a presentation from Capital Market to report on the results of the village's recent bond refinancing. I think some pretty important information here that we want to share with the residents and the taxpayers, and Marcus, I'll let you kind of lead it on this one. Thanks.
No, I appreciate it. We're always trying to do whatever cost savings we can do. We have a very good relationship with Capital Markets, our financial advisor. We always look at opportunities where we can refund money, like almost like a home refinance, whenever we can. Interest rates are very low. So, I have some very good news. We just refinanced a bond, but I'm going to let Richard from Capital One discuss a little bit of the work we've done together and, and some reports, some good news to the village board. So, Richard?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Richard Tortora. I'm the president of a firm called Capital Markets Advisors, and we are an independent financial advisor to many local governments in New York State. The project that Marcus is speaking about is a bond refinancing opportunity that we identified. Marcus had asked us to routinely review all of the village's debt, and of course, we did, and because interest rates have remained very low for the last several years, an opportunity presented itself just a few months ago for the village to go into the market, sell new debt, use the proceeds from this new refunding bond issue to pay off existing bonds. The existing bonds are currently outstanding at interest rates of 4%. You were able to go into the market and dramatically reduce, reduce your cost of capital for that particular loan. So, on April 15th, we went into the market with a competitive sale, so we put together the official statement, the notice of sale and the bid sheet. We had previously gone to the rating agency and confirmed the village's rating, which is very good, a double A rating. Again, a very good reflection on management, because the credit rating, the keys to a credit rating are good underlying economic and demographics, but also good financial performance, relatively low and manageable level of debt, and good management. Those are the four key criteria. We went into the market on the 15th of April. You received five bids at competitive sale, so while you were looking to sell about $5.5 million of refunding bonds, you could have sold five times that amount, which again, a very good reflection on the village, because when we speak to the rating agencies, they always ask us about the client's market access. So, your market access, by virtue of your good credit rating, is very good. You were able to get five times oversubscribed on this bond issue. What that amounted to is, you ended up reducing, as I said, the interest rate from 4% to 1.59%, and your savings over the life of this issue are over $500,000. So, you'll see those savings in each and every year, starting with the fiscal year, the 2016 fiscal year, through and including the 2027 fiscal year, and they're roughly $40,000 plus in each of those years. In doing this refinancing, we didn't extend the term of the debt a day beyond what it would have otherwise have matured, and there are no dis-savings in any later years to generate savings in the front years. And your savings of $509,000 are net of all of the costs of issuance that you incurred, so it's a, it's a net number to you. So, one key criteria that we always look for in a refunding, refunding bond issues, unlike your traditional bond issues, are subject to the review of the New York State Comptroller's Office. So, after we sold the bonds, we reviewed the results with Marcus, got a, got an award. We prepared all the documentation, sent it to New York State. The percentage savings, as a percentage of the bonds that you refunded, was well over 9%, which is a very significant number in our industry, because an issue, a refunding issue is deemed to be attractive if the savings are 3% or higher. So, you had more than three times the level of savings. It was a very successful refunding opportunity. We're scheduled to close on the 15th of May, at which time you'll get the proceeds from this issue will be delivered to you. We went out and we, again, through competitive sale, we purchased a portfolio of treasury securities, so the money will be invested in treasury securities and held with an escrow agent until the monies are needed to call in and pay off those bonds October 15th of next year. But you lock in the savings as of the day of the sale, and you have the money in hand as of the day of the closing, which is the 15th of this month. So, it was a very, very successful transaction. One thing, and he didn't ask for this, Marcus is fast in responding to things, which is very important in a refunding, because interest rates move every day. We identify refunding opportunities for clients all the time. If you looked at our website, you'll see that we've done 15 of these already. We have maybe another 15 teed up in the next couple of months, but the key is responding quickly and getting the resolution adopted, so kudos to you, and then getting in the market and getting it done before interest rates rise. And you did all that flawlessly, so it was a very good transaction for the village. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks, Richard. I think that, that gives a lot of the detail there, and this has worked on for a while, and thank you to you and your helping getting this transaction done.
My pleasure.
Marcus, to you, and, and Jeff in the Treasury Department, great work. Our, our village budget committee also was involved, and, and so we had some other good eyes and ears on it as well. So, congratulations to everybody. I understand it was very well subscribed. I think it's very important. You didn't push the tenor out further than what we have now, so that's really key, that you didn't leverage the future to sort of do this.
Exactly, sure. And savings in each and every year, which is also important.
That's a really good, good component.
And they're relatively level savings, so we didn't front-load them, we didn't put them in the back, so they are relatively constant for the next dozen or so years.
And it was well subscribed. And who were the buyers of this? I mean, who, where do you see that interest coming from?
In the primary market, the buyer would be, is a bank or broker-dealer firm, so Roosevelt and Cross, which is a very big player in our industry, but probably unknown to most of the people in this room, they're typically a buyer. Citigroup could be a buyer, maybe a Bank of America, Merrill Lynch, and then once they buy the entire deal for you, from you, once it's delivered, they parcel it out into maybe $25,000 blocks, or five or $50,000 blocks, sell some to mom-and-pop investors that invest for a college fund or retirement, and the rest might go to an insurance company, it might go to a, a fund, but there's, it's spread out amongst, you know, the investor community.
Yeah, great. Any questions for, for Richard at all? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Very good. You're welcome.
Thank you, Marcus. Well done. Jeff, well done. Good job. Okay, presentation number two is a presentation from Save-A-Tree Consulting Group. We'll be presenting the report, an update report on the High Street property project.
Go back, forward, okay? That's easy. And then if you want to turn the laser pointer, there you go. All right? Use the mic.
Yeah, maybe just kill the lights here, and just as way of background, then we'll let Save-A-Tree introduce themselves. We've been talking about this project for, for quite a while now. It's basically village-owned property, High Street, which is down near the, the train station, which is quite overgrown. We have had the Conservation Advisory Board that's been now very much involved in, in contributing comment, in, in helping to figure out what might be the best way to approach a project that really is about reclaiming open space, beautifying a part of the village, perhaps looking at something that someday could be passive sort of park, recreation area, and certainly opening up, you know, open space in a beautiful new view shed, which, you know, goes in nicely with a beautiful new waterfront park that will be opening up soon down there. So, Save-A-Tree was, I know, recommended by the Conservation Advisory Board. The Recreation Department, I know, Bill, you've been involved with that, or very much involved with that, with this project as well, and toward taking a tree inventory and looking at what might be a good, good plan. I'm going to let maybe Don at the end just sort of give us an update from the board's perspective, and the C A B perspective maybe, but welcome, and we'll look forward to your report. We've got a lot of things on the agenda tonight, so if you can do a condensed version of it, it would be appreciated.
Sure. Matt Wyble with Save-A-Tree Consulting Group, Certified Arbrist, Registered Consulting Arbrist. So, I performed an inventory of the High Street parcel back on March 31st. Inventory all the trees six inches and larger, got their species, condition ratings, created a map, which we may not show, but there are 65 trees that measured six inches or larger on the parcel. You can see in the left-hand column, there's a species breakdown, what we find. It's almost half the trees were Norway maples, the next column was black locusts. Then the right-hand pie graph there shows the current condition of all those trees. What you see is about 31% of the trees are in good condition, 54 fair condition, only two of the trees are currently dead, another 12% are in poor condition health-wise.
The button to the right.
Right, okay. One of the things I was asked to do was look at whether the trees in the parcel are considered invasive or not. I used the New York State invasive species informational website to, to name ratings for all the trees, trees I found the site. And what we find is that basically 83% of the trees are considered moderately to very highly invasive, so basically the entire parcel comprised of invasive species. What that basically means, the trees, those trees are not native to this area of New York, also a tendency to escape cultivation and take over unmanned, or escape into wooded areas and kind of take over and displace native trees, because they grow a little quicker, a little more advantageously, and are able to grow in poor environments, which this site generally is due to the sloping and the thin soil with the rocky bedrock, so it's not surprising to find invasive species here.
What percentage was?
83% are considered moderately to very high invasive, and actually 71% are considered very high. And the two most common species, Norway maple and black locust, are both considered very high invasiveness. So, what I did, I created two management recommendations basically, is one, if, is if you were concerned about invasive species on the site, you're basically going to clear-cutting the site at that point, because there were only, like I said, 11 of the 65 trees that were not considered invasive, and of those, three are currently dead or in poor condition. She removed anyway, just based on health and structure. So, if there were only eight trees on the site of six inches or greater, and the cost of removing every tree but those, she's probably great at just clear-cutting the site at that point, because the work to maintain those eight trees isn't really cost prohibitive at that point, most likely. But the other thing with that is that once you clear the site, you're going to have to replant pretty quickly, because of the sloping and everything, you're going to have a lot of erosion and runoff, and the next, if it get heavy rain, and the cost of replant that site is probably going to be just about the same as removal of all the trees, is my guess, just based on how much new plant would have to go in, and the type of plants you have to use to do slope stabilization, that kind of work, a fairly extensive project. So, I'm not sure if that's the best course of action. So, in the case it wasn't, I came up with a second management plan, which was just based on pruning removal of trees based on their condition and current health and structural condition of the trees. And what I did with those trees, I created a priority, prioritization of when the work should be done. High priority should be done within the next six months, medium within the next year to two years, and low within the next two years or so. And what you see on the right, that's the pie graph of that, which shows that seven trees are considered high priority based on their current structure. 16 of the trees are medium priority, another 29 are low priority. And generally, the high priority trees are ones that are also within striking distance of person or property, so trees that are growing in the middle of the stand-up, even if they aren't likely going to hit anybody or anything, are going to reach a road or a power line or a parking spot. If it falls, it's okay, because right now, there's no bench or any kind of active use inside the parcel. And so, what I have here is just some of the pictures I took while I was out in sight. This is one of the trees that's considered high priority removal. You can see the top of the tree, that hole, you can see right through the tree, extends with the K, the K conks on the one limb there, and that tree kind of extends over onto the parking area in Station Plaza, so if it were to fail, it's likely to hit a parked car or something of that nature, so it's one you want to get out pretty quickly. This is one that has, again, significant decay in the tree, but it's not directly over a street. It's closed, it could hit a street if it were to fail, but if it failed the other way, it's not going to do any damage, so that's why it fell in the medium priority level. Here's another high priority, some reason there's a cable attached from the power line, a power pole across the street to the tree. I don't know if they're trying to hold the power, the, the, I don't know if they're holding the tree up or they're holding the, I'm not sure what they're doing, but the tree has that, that cavity you see there, that's about two feet high, it's a very huge hole in the middle of the tree, so if the tree were to fail, it would take that power line right down with it, most likely, just because the way the tree is greater than what that power line is going to withhold, most likely. So, that's another one, it's a high priority removal. Here you see the erosion washing away the soil underneath, one of the trees along the culvert area there, the washout zone, all that soil erosion's kind of undercutting the tree and making kind of unstable there. If it continues without any action, that's going to continue to wash away, and the tree's likely to fall, but it's also not over the roadway, so it's a less priority in that sense. And then here's a tree, for example, where you have a, you see a little seam going down the middle there, what we call included bark, so that kind of union is very structurally unstable and prone to failure, but you can mitigate that by installing a support cable between the two limbs higher up in the tree. That will help reduce the likelihood of failure at that point, but at the same time, you could decide to remove the tree if that's less costly in a long run, I suppose, because once you, the cable, have to maintain the cable and maintain the tree at that point as well. So, those are all the pictures I had there to show. I don't know if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Matt. And by the way, I mean, his presentation, that was, that was a condensed version.
Yeah.
Because this is a long, long report, it gives a lot more detail.
Yeah.
So, Matt, thanks for that. Yeah, any questions from the board at all? Kathy?
Yes. What do you recommend as the, I don't want to say the cheapest way, I don't mean it that way, but the most efficient way of removal and replanting, so that it's a project that can actually be done, as opposed to trying to do it this way, and we can't afford to do it? And we don't have any numbers here, I'm just assuming.
Yeah, I mean, even if your option was to just clear-cut and redo the entire site, you probably want to do that phased, just phase it and do, you know, a third per year or some of that nature, but if you go by my second option of just removing the trees or pruning the trees based on structural needs, there isn't much follow-up at that point, because there's not enough trees cleared from any one area, most likely, to allow you to do much in terms of replanting right away. There's, if you clean up all the, if you clean up all the overgrown vines and such, there's one section along Station Plaza where it's all but overgrown, dead, small trees and overgrown vines. So, you clear that and put some nice plantings in there. If you were to remove the smaller, I only did trees six inches and greater, there's about twice as many trees that are in the three to five inch range in that parcel, so if you were to take those out, as well as the high priority ones, then you might be able to do some selective replanting as you go, and try and convert it from the current state to either more native trees or doing more ornamental-type trees or shrubs. I believe you have a landscape designer on staff who's a little more, give more detail on what would be, should be used best, but that would be one way to do it, just kind of take out the trees that need based on structure and health, and gradually replant with more appealing trees or low-growing shrubs to kind of cover out, prevent more invasive coming in.
So, just to be clear, the, the trees that are high priority are high risk. Were how many?
Not necessarily high risk. There were 11 that fell, there were 11 that fell under high priority. And some of that isn't, it's not necessarily removal, some of that is just pruning the trees. There's dead, there's a four-inch dead limb over a parking spot.
Right.
Cut that one limb out, the tree's fine.
Okay.
But I think there were 11 trees that fell under that high priority category.
Thank you.
You did have a list there in the back when you had suggestions of what to do with it. I think there were 16 you, you suggested removal.
Total, yes, throughout all priority levels, right. But only two of those are considered high priority based on their location.
Did you say that there are the three to five inch trees, there are double?
It was like, I didn't count those, they were included in the scope of the project, but yeah, there's a significant number of, and they're mostly Norway maples, not very surprising.
Which is not.
Highly invasive tree, right.
So, I think you said there's 65 trees that were?
Six inches and larger.
Right, so that means there's 100 and another 65, or?
Approximately.
Okay.
Yeah, definite numbers in that, but yeah, approximately that.
Any other questions for Matt for the board? Don, does the Conservation Advisory Board have any comments at this time?
They should do, and I think they had to do it.
Great.
Boy, are they going to have comments.
Everybody's read the report, right?
Yes.
I'm Neil, deep ass squall.
Squeeze it, Neil, when it comes down. There you go.
And I'm an engineer. When I went through the report, I got to the last page, and everything was tagged, was great. However, when you go onto the site, the tags are about that big. So, the three of us, Matt, Nancy, myself, went out with the tape, all right? Now you can see red tape, high priority.
Oh, great.
Orange tape, and green tape, it's okay. We took option two as a primary criteria for either keeping the tree, pruning the tree, or letting it alone. We didn't consider the invasive quality of the tree at this point. If you knock all of those trees down, well, you got a problem, and Matt already gave you the reason. Erosion is a big one. When we took a look at the red trees, the red labeled trees, we had good sightlines to the river. We had sightline here, we had the station, which was covered, and then we had a sightline here. So, taking out the trees banded in red achieves our purpose of having a good sight to the river. Then we can prune other trees to improve the site, and that's what we came up with.
You guys went walking around in there?
Sure did.
Wow.
Up and down, and I.
Mark hates hearing about that, the liability here, but it's, well, that's incredible, man, that's really good.
I really slept that night. I tell you, takes a lot of effort.
Next time, we're going to bring some, something to clean up while we're out there.
I can imagine, yeah.
Really.
Actually, just doing that would be huge.
Mm-hmm.
Would, so following that plan, would, would there also be replantings that we would need to do at this time, or that wouldn't be necessary at, at this phase?
Matt?
That would really depend on if you're going to remove any of these smaller trees as well, just based on removing the five, I think it's five high priority trees and the pruning, there's probably not enough space to put much new planting in, but maybe some low-growing ground cover, some.
Would be recommended, something.
A couple of things, maybe just to help stabilize.
So, Neil, how many red, red are there? How many red ones are there?
Did we do all of them?
They did all the red ones.
Did all of them, the red ones, under option two, two, four, six.
16 somewhat, right?
Big ones.
Five or seven?
And some of the, some of the orange ones just need trimming, like he said, you know, and, and off of the top, or just over a, you know, a dangerous area. And I, I mean, well, we were also looking, I mean, the vines are unbelievable, you couldn't count the amount of vines, and cleaning that up will make it nicer too, and then the underbrushes, the ivy, there's lots of daffodils coming up, there's day lilies coming up, that's, you know, so this will give that, you know, a chance to have a little color and, you know.
Yeah, great. Okay, so we have a.
We also, excuse me, we also so considered cost. Can't hear me. We also so.
They don't want to hear this part.
They don't want to hear this part. We also so considered cost. Where are the funds coming from? An important consideration, and eventually, we're going to have to attack it. This is a parcel currently. A park turns, allows us to go into a different pool of funds. That's not in our purview, that's your purview. So, we wanted to keep the cost initially down.
Yeah, and also the, the phased-in piece, you know, because, you know, there'll be, there are more leaves there today than there were when we looked like two days ago, so, you know, you can phase it in and probably.
So, just so I'm clear, so for option two, you have high priority, remove five trees, then medium priority, remove seven more trees, then low priority, remove four more trees. So, that will be a total of 16 trees.
Do not remove.
Well, it says remove the following tree.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, there's, there's 16 to be removed total throughout the three priority levels, and then the other.
And how much time in between with those? We could do that six months later, or?
You could theoretically do them all right now, actually based upon budget, I mean, the, whatever your limit, I don't know what your money is, I don't know how it works, obviously, but if you had the money to do everything right now, then yeah, go ahead and do it all right now, but you generally, when this is, I do these generally for homeowner associations or college campuses, and it's just not practical doing it at once, so you help to prioritize it for them, to help, so they can work with their budget and do whatever they can, but ideally, a high priority within, like I said, six months, and you come back to medium, do medium next year, and then low priority the year after that.
Okay, got it. Okay, do we feel like we have enough information? An inventory's been taken. You've recommended a specific plan, you've marked the trees. Do we have enough to go and have Marcus begin to work on a bid process?
Yes.
With your involvement, of course. We'll continue, all be involved here. Great. Okay, so that's what we'll do next. Okay, thank you very much. Great work, and look forward to continuing this project. Thank you very much, Nancy. Thank you, Neil. Hey, Matt, thanks for the presentation, thanks for your work. Okay. Okay, now we're going to move to our public hearings. First is, I'll have, need a motion to open a public hearing. This is to have a discussion and to consider to amend Village Code 180-5 sprinkler systems. Is there a motion to open this public hearing? Trustee Goleo, second trustee Kay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, that passes with six eyes. Just a few comments here, we've talked about this a little bit, we're going to talk about it more tonight. I don't anticipate that this board is going to take action on this, this item tonight. We have received some, I know that some of the trustees have some questions for the building department, the building department here is to explain further what the proposal is. We've received some written comments, and we really appreciate those written comments. I know it'd be very difficult tonight to talk for three or four minutes about this particular item. I do want to try to keep the comments limited to three to four minutes tonight on this, so if you do have some strong opinions, I would encourage you to, Neil, we got your input, we really appreciate, nice way to do it. We're all going to read through that, I've already read through some of it as well, and I want to encourage, if anybody else has, you know, strong opinions about that, to write them down, send them to the board, it's the best way for really, for us to look at it and take input and not take too much time to discuss it. As I said, I don't anticipate we're going to take action tonight, we're going to, we're going to think this one through, and certainly we won't take any final action if we take any action at all on this without having another public hearing and discussing it more. So, a little bit of background. So do we want to go right with Ed, or do you want to give a little bit of background on this, Marcus, or Darius, or we'll, okay, so we'll turn it over to the building department. So Ed, I think just a little bit of background, I mean, we've talked about this before, but you got a little bit more detail here on what it is that you're recommending, and why?
Sir?
Thank you.
Good evening, board, Ed Manley, building inspector. The proposal today is to add some verbiage to an existing sprinkler law. That verbiage is just a formula that allows any applicant doing a major renovation to know when he has exceeded the 50 percentile mark and needs to, is required to add sprinklers to his job, his or hers. So, to clarify again, we have an existing sprinkler law that is more stringent than the state, we've had it for a long time. This is just to clarify a problem, an argument between contractors and the building department, at what point do I make 50%? So, we have been enforcing this code this way, just trying to add the verbiage to the, to the zoning code. The spreadsheet-
Ed, why don't you talk about what is the verbiage, what's the difference and what you're trying to clarify?
Oh, okay, well-
Just so everybody understands this.
The code currently says that if you add 50% or renovate 50% of your structure, an existing structure, you need to add fire sprinklers to the whole structure. So, what we're adding is a formula, which says, gives you the way to calculate that. So the existing conditioned space, or ECS, is a square footage of existing finished space excluding garages, unfinished basements, and attics. Then the EAS, existing altered space, which would be any, any area that is affected by alteration, any room is determining what's, what's affected, any room which has more than 15 square feet of surface, wall, floor, ceiling open, that room would then be considered in the calculation. So new space, NS, is any addition, any space that's added to the existing structure. So then gives us a formula of EAS, or existing altered space plus new space divided by existing conditioned space times 100 gives us a percentage. So it's a very simple formula to use and clears up all the discussion back and forth. The, the work spreadsheet that I've given you is just some examples of the past six months sprinkler permits that were pulled in Dobbs Ferry. And if you look at, under required by state, there's two at the top and two at the bottom that say no. So that's telling you that the state, under state law, they wouldn't have had to put them in. But under Dobbs Ferry law, they did have to put them in. And if you look, and the reason I brought up this spreadsheet is because the last time we spoke, the biggest concern that I heard was money, and how much is this going to add to a project? So if you, you can look at the cost of the sprinklers on those jobs, the cost of the building construction, and the percentage of sprinkler to building. So the highest one here is four and a half percent. We have nothing, no jobs here under 150,000, and I believe 150,000 was greatly underestimated for that particular project, the last one, so that number would probably be reduced at the end when we get their final cost of construction. So, 3% is not a great deal of money when you're talking about a $7,000 addition to a $300,000 job. We don't have any 20,000, $50,000 renovations here that are requiring sprinklers. The people who are, are very worried about having to spend additional money for a small renovation, it's just not going to happen. These are major overhauls that are considered affected and have to put in sprinklers. You'll see some of the smaller ones are just like buildings that already had sprinklers and modified some space, so they had to move the sprinklers to make it, to correct the coverage. That's normal, that's required by state anyway because they already had sprinklers. So basically, that's it, that's the purpose of this spreadsheet, is to show you the small percentage of a large project that the sprinklers cost. I think Chief McLeven could, could add to the benefits of the sprinklers, both economically and safety wise, because that's what it's all about, that's why we passed this law eight years ago to make Dobbs Ferry a safer place.
I have a question. If the old code said 50% of the floor space, right?
Correct.
Isn't that easier than this math equation? Like, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, it's 50%, we thought it was simple, but people are arguing, well, do I have to open 50% of this room to be, for that room to be considered? Or do I have to open 50% of, you know, what, the floor, the ceiling, the walls? It's, it's unclear. So this equation just clarifies that and makes it a set point.
I have a question about the 15 square feet in any room, then that entire room is added to the, to the cap?
To the equation, correct.
That just, why, how did you pick 15 square feet? Because like, say, if somebody's adding a window in each room of the house, that could blow the equation, yes?
If you were adding a room, and when would that happen? I mean, you wouldn't-
I just, how did you come up with 15 square feet as the, as the number?
One, to, to snake something through a room to get up to the second floor, do something minor like that, you would have to open up one bay, which would be a lot less than 15 square feet.
Okay.
So, at 15 square feet, you're talking at least two bays. There'd be no reason to open up two bays just to snake some wires or pipes up to, you know, an additional bathroom in, on the second floor or something like that. So that, takes that out of the equation. If you're opening up 15%, you're doing something major in that room, adding headers, taking out a wall, you know, or opening up all the outside walls to add insulation. Once you do this, the idea of that is you've opened up enough to get the sprinkler pipes up there without any other major work, and then to make that, that room safe. And, again, you have to be doing this in 50% of the rooms in your house.
Right.
So if you're just opening up, adding a couple of windows, or adding a doorway from a dining room into a living room, it's not going to bring you into this percentage. This is only, the only time we're seeing this is major jobs, total renovations, gut jobs, big additions.
Ed, you may have answered, you may have answered this already, but how did you arrive at this, this formula? Is it based on, like, standard practices somewhere, or are it just?
I made it up.
And you based, and you made it up based upon your experience and?
Yes, my experience enforcing the code and what the questions and arguments were with the contractors, and just, in my mind, how to clarify and nail down a certain amount of space.
Okay, thanks.
Ed, I have one comment here. My, and again, thank you, Neil, I appreciate the concern you have, you know, for the fire, the safety. My concern really comes into play at 25 Springhurst Park, where it's a relatively small job, that is where it jumps to close to 8%. And the fact that it has an existing sprinkler system, so it seems like there only had to be a piece that had to be added.
Right, 25 Springhurst Park was-
Yeah, can I, I'm sorry.
Sure, finish, I'm sorry.
Let me finish my point, I'm sorry, please. My fear is that if that was a, an older home that was renovated, where you did the basement, and you kind of get penalized because you don't include the unfinished in the denominator, but the numerator picks that up, you know, my fear is on a more expensive job, that's where it could get expensive for, for somebody who doesn't have an existing sprinkler system.
Yeah, that's not the case. So, 25 Springhurst Park was built at a time when new construction required sprinklers. They had sprinklers. The reason the ratio is so skewed is because somebody did work, the basement's already finished, somebody did work altering the basement space, moving walls, creating bedrooms illegally. So, this was a legalization, walked, Brian went in there on a CCO investigation and found new walls. And the sprinkler heads were now blocked by those walls, so the coverage was not correct. So if there was a fire there, the sprinkler head went off, it was going to hit a wall and not spread out to put out the fire. So, when they did the legalization, they just threw out a number, $8,500, that's what it's costing me. It wasn't the true cost of the renovation in the basement, but the $650 was the true cost to move the sprinkler heads. So that's why the percentage is skewed there. It's almost always because of illegal activity.
I'm just, getting a little technical here, but, with somebody finishing the basement, now that's, that has to be, the sprinklers come into effect, is the space, normally the space of the basement is not added to the house for an overall square footage. If you're doing the basement's area-
That, that would be considered new space then. If it was unfinished before and now you're finishing, it's considered under formula new space.
And so, if you-
So if you have a two-story house, and, and which isn't usually the case, even saying the basement was the full size of the rest of the house, it would only be a third.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So you wouldn't have to add sprinklers.
That's the new, okay.
But, if you had a third floor, by state code, you have to add sprinklers on the third floor and the path of Egress out. Once you get above that second story, the state tells you you need sprinklers to, to safely have the time to get out of that third floor, but not the basement.
Thank you.
Ed, I also thought I saw something in there, and I could be incorrect on this, that there was a timeframe from when you did work, let's say, in part of your house, that you opened up a certain amount that did not qualify you for the 50% rule. Then two years later, I decided to do another section of my same level downstairs somewhere, that, that other section gets applied to the new work being done also, that could then throw me into the 50% category and I would have to put-
That was someone else's suggestion that I had to that, to try and stop people from breaking up their, their jobs just to avoid this and doing it piecemeal. If the board, you know, has a big problem with that sentence, I'm willing to let it go.
Yeah, because I have concerns, that's a good point, I have concerns too, because some people don't do it all at once because they don't have the money to do it all at once.
Right.
That would be my concern.
I, I had a little concern with that.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Chief McLeven, would you like to make any comments related from the fire department's perspective?
I'd like it as it stands, so.
You like, could, you like the, the law the way it's currently written in the code?
No.
Okay?
The changes.
Yeah, the changes.
Oh, the recommended changes?
That's right.
Oh, you like the proposed changes?
Propose changes.
Okay. We can't get you the mic to come up here and say that?
Come on, come on, you're cheating, come on. I don't know why you need to be here.
No, it's important, it's important.
The biggest problem was before, and Ed's aware of it, but if you go out on Washington Avenue, you'll find three houses by the Irvington Line. The two houses close to the golf course, one is fully sprinkled, one isn't. Houses look identical, and the reason is the builder, because there was the retrofit provision, came in, bulldozed the house, broke up the property, built another new house alongside it. The one he bulldozed, he left the front wall up. It was a ranch style house, came back as a two-story colonial. It was rebuilt, it wasn't a new house. One wall made it just a rebuilt. So that's why this law came about, was like, we got to do something about this because it's not really rebuilt. And I mean, literally, the house tripled in size. So that's why this has been coming about. And again, it's a problem, because a lot of people, you start asking somebody, what does it actually say? And people start fighting, well, 50% of the cost, 50% of the square footage, what? I know some houses up on Clinton Avenue, somebody built a house, has a attic you could literally put the Hindenburg in. I mean, it's tremendous, it's unfinished. Now, you know, I know, as that house survives over the years, somebody's going to eventually say, it's time to do something with the third floor. And again, this doesn't really affect it because the New York State law now says third floor is going to have to be sprinkled. The house is already sprinkled, but not up in the attic space. So, again, when you take space and change it up, and that's one of the problems, you know, I'm going to take the space and renovate it, I put somebody in the basement, do you really want to live in the basement of the house? I mean, honestly, when you look at it from a life safety standpoint, I got a serious problem because that person's going to have a lot of trouble getting out of attic space if there's a fire going on. If they have direct access here, it's built on a slope, it's one of our guns in our own houses, you know, it's not a big issue, you can go out the back, you're, you're great. But where you're totally underground in the house, you don't get a lot of time to get out. Our population, it varies, but if you look at single family dwellings, we killed more people in single family dwellings than any other type of structure in the US right now. And that's going to continue for a long time. And it's kids and elderly that die the most. So, expanding it in, and, you know, I, I can see that, you know, somebody says, well, you know, I don't have the money to finish a job right now. I've seen that. I've also seen people that have done that, you know, one piece at a time job, where they just keep going for 10 years rebuilding the house. And, you know, again, it's one of the things, we're trying to stop that from happening and trying to get a lot of this stuff sprinkled. If you look at Main Street, a good portion of Main Street's been retrofitted with sprinklers. A good partnership, portion of the entire commercial district. Mercy College, I'm really happy to say, they only got one building left that hasn't been totally retrofitted. But Victory Hall's been done, Mercy Hall's been done, the main college building is the only one that's not done. And the new dorm is fully sprinkled. So, you know, a lot of the problems are basically taken care of themselves. Anything else?
Chief, no, thanks, those comments were important, that's why, I'm glad I called you up. Okay, we'll take some comments from any residents or anybody that might want to comment on this, at this public hearing? And please, keep your comments to three minutes, four maximum if you can, please.
I'll try. Mike Marrow, 32 Walnut Street. Save time if everybody remembers reading the New York State law on, the executive law on the state sprinkler code? No? Handed out copies to everybody on the board in a previous meeting, this has been going on for at least four months. The residential code by the state was specifically built to address the problem of every municipality coming up with their own laws and doing things which were duplicative, unnecessary. I guess one of the first questions I would have for the village code, which we still haven't gotten answered in four months, is the actual safety impact of this. I mean, at least- I mean, at least from what I see, most of the tragic fires are because there haven't been working smokes as there should be throughout the house, right? Name one where, where they had smokes, but it was lack of sprinklers that didn't save them. Can, can somebody come up with one example?
There was a building in the news just a while ago, built by the same construction company that's going to be building Rivertown Square Residential. There was a great fire there. And this, there, it was sprinkled. Not one person died. The building burned to the ground, but the people had the time to get out. It works.
Okay, we-
I wouldn't think too much.
We, we still haven't-
You've got a couple minutes here to go here, Mike.
We still haven't had a tragedy that's, that's not been saved by having smokes. And smokes is the priority in the state code, right? One of the, one of the problems when you do these things in order to, you know, pretend you're doing safety is discourage people from improving on their, on their buildings, especially with single-family residences. We're not talking about redefining gut renovations, because if that's all that needs to be done in the, in the village code to make sure that people don't leave one wall up and don't count it as a new building, then that's an easier fix, right? But as far as making everybody with a historical building have to put in sprinklers because, I mean, the same example I gave before, their plaster ceilings are falling. What are you going to do? How many square feet is that? Every room, it's going to exceed the fifteen square feet. Are you going to make them put in sprinklers because their plaster ceilings are falling? I mean, that happens with a nineteen twenties house, right? I know of several. I had the same problem. You know, the, the increase in costs is really only going to drive the small projects from being visible. You know, some people also work on their own houses over ten years, right? They're not hiring somebody because they happen to have an extra five hundred thousand dollars in their pocket to rebuild their castle, right? We're talking about people that are trying to restore their homes over time, and that's part of the character of this village. If we're going to preserve any of that, we've got to say, well, we're not going to throw everything out because we've got to rebuild everything new and with sprinklers, right? I mean, that's essentially what we're talking about here. It's okay because we're spending five hundred thousand dollars anyway, so if we spend thirty thousand on sprinklers, that hasn't really impacted the overall cost of the project. You know, it also brings up the question of why are we so hot on making sure everybody buys sprinklers with every permit that gets issued at the Building Department? Is this a fee generator? Because what is the cost versus the benefit on this, right?
So, you asking us, just to clarify, you asking us to repeal the present sprinkler law? Is that what you're asking us to do, to go back to the state law?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it, the state law addresses everything that is, that has to do with safety, right?
What are you asking us today?
It specifically addresses third floors because that's where there's an egress-
Right, but are you asking us to repeal this current law to go, to match the state law? Is that what you're asking us to do?
If, if the problem is defining a gut renovation, then redefine it as a gut renovation. Don't say fifty percent and then put in arbitrary definitions that allow for arbitrary enforcement to selectively generate fees and give other people ways of getting around those, right? Because some people will do that, right? It's not going to provide any safety. It's also going to prevent some people from doing things like rewiring their house, which could be the biggest safety impact as opposed to, you know, let's, let's keep them from putting new wiring in because we'd really like them to have sprinklers.
All we're talking about today is an, is an, is an equation to how to evaluate the current sprinkler law that's in effect today.
I understand that.
That's all we're talking about today.
And it's pretty arbitrary, because it has nothing to do with, is this a residential building? Is this a two-family? Are we breaking this into two families so we can rent it to somebody else and put them at risk, right? If we're talking about illegal apartments, that's a different issue, right? That's a different safety problem. It's going to be a different safety problem no matter how you look at it. It will always be a safety problem, right? You can't enforce sprinklers in illegal apartments, right? What you got to do is prohibit illegal apartments, right? And if the problem is with multi-level residential structures with, with multiple occupancy, address that. But a single-family homeowner makes a rational choice of what they install, what they fix, what they have to fix, what they prioritize, right? And every twenty, thirty thousand dollars counts, right? It's not, oh, well, it's just a little bit. I mean, if it's that little, I'll take it, right? Give me the money. I'll put them in. Well, no, I wouldn't, because how many times have we had leaks in sprinkler systems in Dobbs Ferry? Have there been, been any instances of those? What kind of damage does that do? What has that saved the people, right?
Mike, could I ask you to do this? Because I think if, if you could present this in an outline form to us, because I do want to move on.
Again. Yes.
Well, I'm not sure you did those, those specific points you've raised tonight, but if you could do that, it would be helpful, and we definitely will consider that.
Okay.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else care to address the board?
Neil, White House, twenty-six Hatch Terrace. I would, I had, as you mentioned, Mayor, I had sent a, a written piece, which I'll give to Liz to put into the record. In essence, I think, I'll quote a little bit from it just to say, the issue here is not whether, in general, sprinklers can make fire more survivable, but whether there is a valid case to add these regulatory burdens and whether all the costs are fully and accurately documented and whether there are identifiable benefits that will directly result from and justify these, these costs. I mean, that's the essence of, of what we're here for. It is the obligation of government, if it, if it wishes to add costly burdens to the populace, to justify those burdens. And in what has been presented, there is not any supporting documentation or sufficient detail to actually justify these changes. This is the opinion of the, the code enforcement officer, he's a professional, and it, and the fire chief, that they would like to see more sprinklers in the community. You know, that, that is, that is a valid and worthy thing to say that we want to provide more safety and protection in the community. The question is whether this particular proposal to, to make the, the code even more restrictive in Dobbs Ferry than it currently is and far more restrictive than it is in the state, whether the, the burdens of cost that would, would come on people are justified and whether, in fact, the manner in which it is put forward would actually be a disincentive for people to improve their properties. Because with our old housing stock, what we want people to do is to improve their properties. We want them to renovate. We want them to redo their electrical systems. We don't want fires from, from bad outlets and that sort of thing, which is a real problem. But if you, if you create a, a structure where there are additional costs and there are additional potential burdens that are significant, and when we look at the housing stock in Dobbs Ferry and you say, now, this is not, this is not suburban Atlanta where the housing, a lot of the housing was built in the nineteen seventies and eighties and it's modern construction and it has a certain burn rate, and also that if you want to do changes to it, you, you know what you're dealing with. We have a, a building stock here, a housing stock here, where when you start doing anything, it, it always creates all sorts of problems with plaster and lath walls, with, you don't have sixteen-inch centers on, on studs. It, it's an entirely different issue. And when we look at the costs, I've discussed this with a couple of contractors in the village, and they are highly skeptical that ten thousand dollars would actually cover the cost of installing a sprinkler system in an average house in Dobbs Ferry. They're highly skeptical, they raise questions of whether this is, is this assuming surface-mounted or is this actually going into the walls? And in terms of, so there's the cost side of the equation, I just don't think has in any way been adequately addressed. And then there's the benefit side of it, is that, you know, what can we show as would be the actual benefits for doing this? To, to say in general, you know, sprinklers are good, I agree with that, and sprinklers are a good thing to have in general, but is this an appropriate action of government to put this burden on the community? Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Well said. And we do encourage, if anybody wants to write in, yeah, I know, if you want to respond, but, yeah, please.
I read some of Neil's letter, and frankly, these are jobs that have been done. There's no number here higher than seven thousand four hundred. There is incorrect when he's thinking that you need a new line coming in, a new meter. None of that is required anymore in today's one- and two-family dwelling sprinkler system engineering. It's just not required. It's a much easier process. Wood burns at the same rate, whether it's new or old. And as far as arbitrary, this whole thing is to take any possible arbitrariness out of it. It's a formula that we can look at and say, okay, you've met the requirement or you didn't.
There seems to be an emphasis also, if you could stay up there, on, on, because in, on older homes with plaster and-
Plaster-
Maybe some of the issues people have is because they do live in older homes.
Plaster can be patched.
So-
Or you can put sheet rock directly over it.
My question is, are, are those homes, are they safer?
Plaster has a higher fire rating than, than half-inch sheet rock. It's usually applied thicker and denser, yes.
I have a question. Isn't this for new construction and large projects? I mean, this is-
Yes.
I feel like we're having two different conversations here.
And-
Because I built a house, I had to put-
But the formula would apply, it doesn't matter how old your house is.
Right, no, I understand, I'm not saying the age of the house, I'm saying the size of the project, this, relative to your house.
Correct. It's if you're remodeling over fifty percent of the house or adding on over fifty percent.
Ed, do you think that the, the new equation will create more of a need for sprinklers or is it just a way for you to do calculation?
No, it's just, it's just clarifying the way I'm already enforcing it.
Right, and that's the law that's before us today.
It's taking any arbitrary arguments out of the, the process.
Right, of an existing law that's already in effect, right?
Correct.
We're just doing calculations.
Already there, it's being enforced, these are real numbers.
Right.
There's no thirty thousand dollar jobs on residential homes here for sprinklers.
Even if there was a thirty thousand dollar job on there, all you're doing today is just making it, simplifying a way to calculate.
Absolutely.
That's all. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thanks for everybody's comments. I think we're going to, we're going to sit on this and think about it a little bit. If you'd like to send any written comments to the board, we encourage you to do so. I think, I agree, yes, this is about balance, these are, things are always about balance. We're not pretending in any way that, that anything would be considered, pretending it's about safety. Safety's a very big part of this. We've heard from the fire chief about that, and we've heard from the code enforcement. We've also heard some other opinions that are very valid in terms of costs and the concerns I know that the board always has about fees and adding taxes and hidden taxes, and that's certainly something that's got to be considered here as well. So, we'll take it all in. And what do you think at this point? Just, we'll continue the public hearing, right?
Adjourn the public hearing.
Adjourn the public hearing? Yeah, we'll notice when it's going to be, when we, we bring it back. So, thanks, everybody, for your comments. At this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn. That's what I'm doing, is I'm adjourning the public hearing. I don't know if we want to set a date. Does the board want to set a date? Do you want to revisit this in two weeks? That wasn't a strong, no strong nods up there.
Well, see what written comments come in over the next few weeks.
Okay. We'll still have time to notice this. So, I'm just going to take a motion to adjourn, at this point, the, the public hearing. Trustee Goleo, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion, all in favor? Okay. That's adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your comments. Public hearing number two, I'll open, which will be, I'll take a motion to open in continuation of the public hearing on the tentative budget for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Is there a motion? Trustee Goleo, second. Trustee K, all in favor? Pass it with six ayes. Okay, it's time for us to, to, to take action on the fiscal two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. We are quite, required to do this prior to May first of, of each fiscal year. A couple of weeks ago, we opened the, the public hearing, in which case, the village administrator and the Treasury Department presented the tentative budget for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. That's a pretty thick document, there's actually two of these. Along with that, the village administrator also gave a very nice presentation that night, highlighting the, the main components of the, the budget, of which they're quite about, all the departments, sort of the, addressing the, the fund balance, how we stand versus other municipalities, the processes involved, and a lot of detail there. We did hold a public workshop about a week and a half ago with the department heads, which was very productive, a chance for the, the board, which has all along, to, to drill down a little bit more in terms of the department heads' requirements and priorities. And that's been a part of the process that we've been doing, it's, it's a pretty rigorous process. So, here we are tonight. Marcus, I'm going to turn it over to you now to give a little bit more, talk a bit more about the tentative budget. Any questions that the trustees might have, and we'll take any comments from anybody in the public about the, about the, the budget which you're going to consider here tonight. So, Marcus, want to fill a few other things in?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Did a presentation a couple of weeks ago, hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look at it. It was another tough year working with the department heads. Some of the highlights over the last couple of years, we've reduced the overall staff by over thirty percent. Every single department has been reduced substantially to try to keep the taxes as low as possible. We had another year where assessments went down by about a half a percent. We had mortgage tax, sales tax, pretty, pretty label, level. Good news, good news too, is the retirement bill has gone down a little bit, health insurance has gone up a little bit. So, it's another year of just staying equal and try to keep the taxes as low as possible. So, we're looking at a two-point-nine-one percent increase in the taxes for this year, just to stay level to what we have with the current services we're providing. So, that's the major number. We have the tax cap, we have the tax freeze this year. We're below both to meet the requirements, state requirements. And that means that if we adopt the budget as is, everybody will receive a credit or a check in the mail from the, from the governor, since we meet the tax freeze, which is equal to the amount of the increase in your taxes. So, normally, that would mean that everybody kept hold from the previous year. That's going to be a check, maybe for about, depending on your assessed value, about a hundred, a hundred-eight dollars, that's what the increase is going to be. Depending, that's the average, so it'd be higher or lower depending on your overall taxes. So, that's the increase we're talking about, the average tax bill. That's the highlights of the, of the budget. Hopefully, people had a chance to look, take a look at the budget the way I presented. The whole budget's on the website, and I'm here to answer any questions from the board and from the general public. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus. Does anybody, the board have any questions for Marcus or any comments you'd like to make about the, the budget? Anybody from the, any residents care to, to comment at all or make any input?
Mike, Mayor, on thirty-two Walnut Street. My comment is, you know, obviously, I've listened to the entire budget discussion, and I know you've done a lot of work in making sure everything is cut out or cut down. My one concern is on the, you know, capital maintenance part of it, not the capital, capital improvement part of it, but I guess it's related because the Dobbs Ferry code for the reservation of parkland certainly seems to be written for accommodating new demand for recreational facilities from new residential development. That's how it's written in the code. It does allow for the funds to be used exclusively for park, playground, or other recreational purposes, including the acquisition of property, which isn't quite as specific as what the intent up above is in describing why the developers are being charged for it. But if you look at it, it presumes that with all of these new people will come new parkland, and at some point, it would be nice to- and at some point, it would be nice to see some new parkland instead of just budgeting to cover for maintenance of existing items that haven't been included into the annual budget. I think everybody understands what I'm saying, even if the, the public hasn't followed it But there's a lot of items that have been allocated to the Recreation Trust Fund that are somehow related to public space in Dobbs Ferry that don't actually add new recreational facilities for those additional residents. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if that's, I don't think that's true, Mike, but I don't know, what are you referring to specifically? You must have something specific in mind. What's been allocated that?
Well, I mean, obviously, funds have been used out of the Recreation Trust Fund, right? We don't have, we haven't purchased any land, have we?
No.
Okay. Have we built?
Are you, are you suggesting that we should purchase? We should go into the business of buying land?
Well, I mean, that seems, that seems to be what the, what the allocation is for, right?
No, it's not, no.
The law's actually written so that if a development is made, they provide recreation space in that land, and if they can't, they pay a fee so that the village can put it in trust to do the same thing, right? This, this doesn't specifically say anywhere that the village will charge to provide, to cover for maintenance that's not provided in the annual budget. It, it implies that it's for new park and recreational facilities.
Yeah, and I think it's really where it's been.
I know there are large capital, capital problems.
It's really where it's been applied to, and we appreciate your, your comments very much. We, you know, we have a lot of parkland that we have to maintain. We've, we've, we've done private partnerships to enhance open space. The Waterfront Park is a perfect example of that. The Cemetery Project was another great example of that. The code does provide for the recreation funds to be used in various ways, not to acquire land per se, but to enhance recreational activities or recreational space, open space, and, and that's what it's, you know, been applied for.
Right. Like I said, I recognize that there is that, there is that open interpretation in that one sentence. The entire rest of the code, however, does describe to people that they're going to expect new facilities with the new projects for those new funds, not that we're just going to have more people using.
Right. And that's under consideration too, and I think Bill could, could address that from the recreation, is that we do some of the, the projects that we have recently approved, which will be paying, we hope, an anticipated significant one-time recreation fees. How best to, to allocate those and invest those, those funds? The Recreation Commission is looking at that. You know, Bill, you can talk a bit more about that. One, one area would, that jumps out a lot is the community center. Needs, needs some, needs a big upgrade. We have other properties that could be, could be upgraded, that could provide more benefits to, to more residents. So I think this is really.
I also recognize that this is, this is largely associated with the capital planning as opposed to the annual budget. However, it is, it is missing from the annual budget, right? We're not talking about maintaining the ball field in the annual budget.
Well, we do. Yeah, we do have maintenance.
Right, there is a maintenance line.
Departments all have.
But, but if, if it was continually maintained, you would never have to rebuild the ball field, right? That ball field existed.
I, I don't know, you're losing, you're losing me on that one.
Yeah, I'm lost.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
It was rebuilt. It was.
Any other comments on the, on the budget?
It was in the Recreation Trust Fund line items.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments? Thank you for that.
So Mayor, the board is willing to consider, you have a memo, there was a small change in the assessed value of $3,000, so I made a small modification in the, in the tentative budget to keep everything equal and not affect the tax rate. And you also have a resolution, is the board willing to consider to adopt the budget. So those two documents, if you want to review or have any questions, any one of those two.
Okay, and we can get to that when we close and get into matters requiring action?
Yes.
Any other comments from the board at all? They don't take a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Rusillo, second. Trustee Flynn, all, discussion, all in favor? Okay, that passes with six eyes. And now we'll move on to matters requiring action, the first one being to consider a resolution to adopt the final 2015, 2016 fiscal year budget. I think you've heard the, the details from the village administrator. A lot of time and work went into this. It was really, really tough this year, and it's gonna be very challenging next year and the years out. It does feel like you're on a treadmill a lot. You did mention, which was surprising, that assessed values actually did go down this year, which is, there were some old tax certs that predate any of us that had been in, working through the courts for a long, long time, that, that came in this year and were very, very big items, money out the door, unfortunately. And the discretionary, or the non-discretionary mandates continue to be a challenge. But, you know, 2.91%, I think is good job. Try to do, you know, that was, a lot of effort went into that. We'll still have one of the lowest tax rates of any of the villages in the town of Greenberg as we look to sort of compare ourselves. And I think the bond presentation that we got this morning, you know, I think Dobbs Ferry taxpayers should be, should feel very, very good about the work that the Treasury Department, the village administrator, the new treasurer, the, all the department heads do. The involvement of the board, the involvement of the Budget Committee to, to make Dobbs Ferry a more sustainable village going, going forward. So we should be really, really happy about that. Okay, so did I have a resolution that we?
Yes, there was a resolution.
Okay. So, and I should note that, that, that minor change, I need to know that in the, in the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, so at this point then, I'll take a motion. This is for a resolution to, to adopt the fiscal 2015, 2016 village budget, which will, which will include an increase in the taxable assessed valuation of $3,325. And, okay, so that's included, and this will be setting a tax rate increase of 2.91%, which will be, and our tax rate is $108.94 per thousand of assessed value.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's the motion. No, that's the resolution. Is there a motion? Trustee Goleo, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? And that passes with six eyes. Thanks, Marcus. Good job on that. I know we have some residents here that have been waiting for a little while, so I'm gonna move that item up, because I think it's the only item here that we're gonna have any other, further discussion. So let me take a motion to amend the, to amend the agenda to move action item number four up to action item number two. Trustee Goleo, second. Trustee K, all in favor? Okay. So, new action item number two is to consider a motion requesting a home rule law for residential parking permit system for certain streets. A little bit of background on this, Marcus? Yeah?
Sure. I know everybody's interested what's going on. The situation is, there's been a lot of concerns that people haven't been able to park in front of their houses because they're commuters. In certain areas, people, you know, taking the train, parking certain neighborhoods, people come home, they can't park. So what we try to do is look at a neighbor or communities like Irvington that have a parking permit system. The police chief actually lives in Irvington, so she has to deal with it also. The idea is to give residents an opportunity to be able to park in front of their houses and not have commuters be able to take spaces on it. What the first step you're trying to see here is to, in order to allow permit space on public streets, you have to ask the state to allow you to do that. Doesn't mean you're gonna have, you're gonna do it, it's just that's the first step to do that. If the state allows us to do that, then the next step would be to hold a public hearing and discuss rules and regulations, how we're gonna handle that. Is there a fee? Is there not a fee? How many permits per households? Look at the streets individually, see how wide the streets are. So there's a lot of steps they have to go through. The first thing the board has discussed today is just ask the state to consider, allow the village to have that authority to give permits on the street. So that's what we're talking about. I do have a map that I can bring up on the board, and then people can know the area we're talking about. We work with the Traffic Committee on this. Donna Cassell was very influential on doing it. I'll bring that up in a minute. And we talked to the police chief, tried to talk to all the department heads. Where are the concerns that have been coming from the residents that they have, have had issue with parking? So with, this, this is just the beginning of the discussion. And I'm glad you guys are here, because hopefully, we'll see you here again when we actually start talking about actually creating a law. So with that, I'm gonna bring the map on this, on there, and now the police chief and everybody, we can talk about it, okay?
One quick thing, Marcus.
Yes.
It's not just necessarily people being able to park in front of their homes, there are areas of the village down there where you can't have a park on the street that you live. It's not just in front of your home, so.
Right. So let me bring the map up first.
Hey, Chief, why don't you come over so you can help? I gotta get on the camera.
So I should show, I want you to show you, what we have is a, first of all, we have the zoomed, zoomed out image, we're gonna zoom into it a little bit better. The whole idea is, I'll show it, if everybody can see this. This is the area of the train station, and this is the area that we're talking about. When in close, close proximity to the train station, so we can discuss, but the state allows that to happen.
This would be the maximum area that we would ask for.
Right.
We always want to ask for more in case, we always want to ask for more in case they tell us it's too much. So this is, this is Broadway here, and we actually do have a lot of complaints of commuters parking on Broadway and walking to the train station. And I know Palisade Street, huge, you, you see it every day. Riverside Place, we get frequent complaints, Riverside Place. So this would enable us to consider, we're asking the state to consider this entire area for residential parking. Do I think we'll use this whole area? Probably not.
We have, we use spaces that are not qualified.
Right. So you, we do also have to provide 20% of the spaces to non-residents. So that would.
Percent?
20%.
20%.
Not less than 20%. And we're fine with that, because we have plenty of metered parking on Palisade Street, on High Street. Chestnut has some metered parking. Oak and Elm also have some metered parking.
So Marcus, this would, this allow people who live on those, when we decide, if we decide, whatever, who live on those streets to get a, like a sticker that they would put on their car that would allow them to park on that street, right?
Well, there are a couple of different ways you can go about it. What they do in Irvington, is I happen to live on one of the side streets off of Main Street, and we do have permits on the cars. And I, I believe it's a $25 fee. The parking on the street is six-hour parking. So if you have a permit, if you have a residential permit, you don't need to move your car. The commuters can't park there because it's only six hours. So you might have business, people from Main Street coming in and parking there without the permit, they have to move their car after six hours. You don't as a resident.
So just to let everybody know, this, this has been done in a lot of other communities to try to assist the residents who live in that neighborhood to allow them to have parking spaces. So this is a, a concept that is not rear-riding the wheel, it's actually happening. And this, and in order to get this thing done, we have to ask the state permission to do so. And we open up a big area, I mean, they might come up and say it's too big, you gotta lower it down, or they might agree to everything. But again, that's the first step. After that, we don't have to do anything, or we can do something different, whatever we do, but at least we got a confined area that we guys should start discussing. So hopefully, that.
Makes sense, Stan.
Do you have the, the other map?
Yeah.
Just so I can say. This looks like a really large area, but when it's plotted on the other, this is the entire village of Dobbs Ferry, it would be just this area would be included in that, the area closest to the train station. One other thing I want to throw in is that, one of the reasons we wanted to do this tonight is because it has to go through Andrew Stewart Cousins' office, which is the state, the Senate, the state senate, and they adjourn in June. So I want to give a shout out to Chief Gilardi, because this happened at the last minute, and she got this together, and I don't know how you did with everything else that was going on this week. But that's the reason we'd like to try to get this passed tonight, so that we can get this going before the senate adjourns.
And if, and if we, if we did pass a resolution, and then it would have to go to another step, then the legislature, the New York State Legislature would have to take action. And, and, but if we received it, if it was approved, it doesn't necessarily mean that we.
You don't have to do anything.
We don't have to do anything. We just then have the ability to.
No, we don't have to do, we just can't do it without the approval.
Without, right. So we're not thinking of any specific strategies or any action right now, other than having the ability to do that, to do this in this specific area.
There, there clearly is a problem, Palisade Street, Riverside Place, Hatch Terrace, we, all, all of the side streets, Walnut, Chestnut, Oak, Elm. We do have a lot of commuters parking there.
Okay. So we said we would take some comments from any residents who are concerned about this or wanting to get some more information, so, you know, on this particular item, if you'd like to, please.
It's two, it's two seconds. Just one of the reasons that we extended the area up is we anticipate that if, if we made this area residential, that problem is just gonna move up here. It's not, it's gonna go away, they're gonna move to a different area. So we wanted to make the area large enough, should we need to incorporate this area, we can, because it's already part of.
Trying to take a little bit of a head on how people are moving and reacting to this, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Ed Hennessey, I live at 80 Bellwood Avenue in Dobbs Ferry, but I also, my wife and I own 150 Palisade Street, so it is a concern we've had. And rather than go into details until this other meeting will take place, I would just encourage the board to go ahead to the state and get this started somehow. One thing I do have on my list is the fact that we can currently stripe the parking spaces on Palisade Street, which would help. We have a number of people who park four or five feet behind other people so they can get out, quote unquote, when they come home. If the, the space is delineated by the lines and they're done correctly, it would at least give us some increase in spaces. In all honesty, it would have to be done similar to what was done on Elm Street, because once before, I had Jim down at the, at the house we were talking about, and he said there's a certain amount of space you have to give for a driveway. But on Elm Street, they restricted that, or actually came up with a new space requirement or distance requirement, so they could be closer to the driveway and gain space out of it. But if, if we could just, you know, stripe the street, paint it, and put the parking spaces in, that would be something we could do and it'd help right now. But it's, it's honestly a serious problem. There's been verbal altercations on the street, some of our witnesses, some I've heard about, and it's just gonna get worse. It's been getting worse, because the first time I brought this up, Brian Monahan was the mayor. That's to tell you how long ago. And I still have the letters from those, those days. But just one point I had to make, this morning, I went down specifically at nine o'clock to count the spaces between Cedar Street and the opening at 145 Palisade Street. And on both sides of the street, there are approximately 24 spaces available. 21 cars were in those spaces this morning, so there we lost three immediately. Of the 21 cars, at least 14 of them were commuters. And you, you see that by just looking at the stickers on their cars. They have overnight parking for Argyle, Irvington, sorry. And, you know, you see Irvington's stickers on them. We even have a gentleman that drives over from Tappan, New Jersey, and I actually questioned him one day why he was there. I thought he would move, and he just hadn't changed his license plates. But he comes over, he used to go to Tarrytown, now he comes to Dobbs Ferry, because it's easier for him to commute. And it's, it's just that it got to the point where you really can't. I've had two tenants recently in the last six months move out, and one of the reasons they moved and started to look for places was the fact that you get up in the morning, if you go for coffee, you go to the store for any reason, you come back, there's no parking space. It's gone. And it just, you know, and it just gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
I'll be back.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board members. Brian Mitchell, 154 Palisade Street. My wife and I live there. I'm also a member of the Traffic Committee. We've talked about this a number of times. I'm very glad that this came together. I would say I would encourage you to take this threshold step, to go get the Home Rule, and then we can decide how we want to... What we want to do after that. I've talked to a number of neighbors. Some of them are sitting here today, and they've been pretty much said something needs to be done. So I encourage that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from residents? Okay, great. Thanks very much for those comments. Betsy, thanks for the work. And Don, I know the Traffic Committee is working on this as well. So let's take that step. I'll consider... I'll take a motion requesting... This is a motion to request a Home Rule law for residential parking permit system for certain streets within the village of Dobbs Ferry as marked in the detail map. Oh, we have a resolution. I'm trying to make one up here. It's all written out for me.
I'm going to make it easier for you.
Thanks. Every time I think I'm getting good at this, I just botch it up. Okay. So this resolution, Village of Dobbs Ferry Board of Trustees requesting New York State legislative action to authorize on-street parking permitting on designated village streets. I think it goes in here a little bit more detail, does refer to the map. Obviously, this is being strongly recommended by the Chief of Police, as well as our Traffic Committee is looking closely. And we've heard, and many of us know, the issue of parking and people using village streets to use the commuter parking or get away from using the commuter parking lot. And it's causing some real problems. So that's the resolution. If we adopt this, then I guess we'll get this right up to Andrew Stewart-Cousins' office where it needs to go, and she'll run with it from there. So I'll take a motion for this resolution. Yes, from Donna Casell. Second, Trustee Rusillo, discussion? All in favor? Great. That passes with six eyes. And we thank the residents very much for your input and your comments. Thank you.
We got applause. Wow.
Wow. That is a change. We never get applause.
Usually, we get tomatoes.
Action item number... We rearranged this a little bit. So we're going to go to what will now be action item number three, but was old action item number two, is to consider a motion authorizing the expenditure of $1,000 for the installation of a charging station at the Village Hall parking lot. This came at us pretty quickly, basically an opportunity for a grant from NYSERTA. Thanks, folks. For an electrical vehicle charging station that essentially is going to pay the village the bulk of what... Which it would cost to install this unit, approximately $15,000. And Marcus, I'll give it to you to explain a little bit more about how this came about and what we're considering here today. This is pretty exciting, but there are a couple of things that we do want to communicate, kind of location, where this is going to go, and timing and things like that. So...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Nina Oviedo apologizes for not being here today. This is something that she... Her and the Energy Task Force has been working on for some time. And she didn't expect it to come so quickly and have such a tight timeline, but that's what happens sometimes when you get a grant. What this supplies to us is a charging station that we actually could charge up to two vehicles at one time. The way it works is that we have to pay for installation, but they actually install... They actually... The equipment comes in and actually installs it for us at no cost, $1,000, let's say. And then, as we buy... If we decided to buy electric vehicles, and the general public has electric vehicles, they can plug it to it. The location we're talking about, behind Village Hall, of course, in the parking lot, the specific location, we've had some discussion. We can look at an area that works for everybody. That would be... Besides that, there'd be little or no cost to the village because what will happen is anybody uses the charging station, they actually pay for the electricity that they're being used. And you can actually charge a little bit more if you wanted to. Some municipalities, to encourage turnover, you know, you might pay 15 cents a kilowatt hour. Maybe you charge 15 cents for the first two hours, and after that, you charge $1.15 to encourage them to move. Also, they have to pay for the parking space. So they pay... Just like anybody else will take a parking space, they have to pay for the parking space as the meter. So those are the things we can discuss. The situation is right now that the village, if they want to get this, we have to adopt this now because of the timeline of the grant. And then we could discuss policies. We can discuss costs or charge back to anybody that is using it. Well, I know there's a concern about a number of parking spaces. I actually, Chief and I, have been reviewing the parking lot in the back for a couple of weeks. And since we got the kiosk back in, we found a lot more empty spaces during the day. I've been taking pictures every day. There's been at least 10 or 15 spots open every day during the day at least that I've been monitoring the lot in the back. And I think the chief would also agree with what we've been observing for the last couple of weeks. So this is something that I think needed to do. It's a great achievement. And then we get to discuss more cost. You can control the system. This is $200... It's $300 for maintenance fee, but that includes the air card that's on the equipment to actually monitor the machine, how it's being used. There's the actually... The equipment that is actually used is... Anybody has an electric car, they have a website called ChargePoint whereby it's an app on your phone, and it shows you any charging station in the area you're driving in. And it shows you, if it's a red dot, that means it's being used. If it's a green dot, that means it's available. And it pinpoints where you are. So, okay, I've got to charge my car. Where can I go? And you just plug in there. And then you get a little card that looks like one of those... Those like, when you go to the supermarket, there's little pass cards with a barcode. And then when you go in to charge, you put that code in, and it charges your account like an easy pass to pay for that, and the village gets reimbursed for the use of electricity. So just to explain a little bit how the process works, I would like to discuss that more with you. Nina, again, apologize she couldn't be here. She would like to be here in the next meeting to discuss it more with the village. And by then, it might be installed by then, and we could discuss more about policies and charges, and we have a lot more flexibility. So hopefully I explained.
Yeah. Any questions here from the board?
Yes, it's one car at a time, right?
Right now, you can charge up to two.
You charge two cars at a time.
Yeah. So you can decide, you have to do one, try it out, see what the demand is. So again, that's something we can discuss, how you want to handle it.
Marcus, being that this did come up last minute, and I understand the timeline on having to get this through, if we do approve this, but after some more due diligence is done on the parking area and everything involved, do we have to go through with it? And would there be any ramifications to the village if, for some reason, the board found that maybe this wasn't the proper, you know, area for it or the right thing for the village?
Yeah. I talked to Nina about that, that situation, that we can get the equipment back. We lost $1,000 when we installed it, but we can get the machine back, and then they'll give it to another municipality that wants it.
Ah, okay.
So then we're on the hook for the $1,000 installation, which actually could become a little bit more than that, depending upon where you might run the line or something.
Yeah. The actual average installation, normally 2,500. They actually... The guy has connection with Nina for her connection and what she's done. They actually gave her another $1,000 discount, so that's why it's only $1,000.
Did that answer your question, or... Donna, did you have some? Donna, did you have a...
No, no, I just wanted to know how many.
Yeah. One question, Marcus. I know if Jeff was here, he talked about electric vehicles, like for the village.
Vincent? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Marcus, I know, right? Jeff had brought up the idea of electric cars for the village. Could the village utilize? Is it just for the public?
No, 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 no. This is mainly for the municipal workers first. If we go into getting electric vehicles in the future, technology up to it, that it could be used for electric vehicles in the future, we're primary. And then when we're not using it, it could be used by the general public.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Marcus? Yeah, I think this did come up quickly, so... Which is good. I mean, it's a good opportunity. I think it fits in with the bar that Dobbs Ferry has set. It's very, very high on environmental, sustainable projects that the Energy Task Force has worked on, that this board has supported, the staff has supported, Gary and all the departments have been so involved. We've made a lot of meaningful savings, and this would be another step in that direction. I do think that, Chief, that we should really think about location. I talked with Marcus a little bit about it, you and I. You know, if you're going to have this thing, probably don't want it in the back of the parking lot where people can't find it. Bring it up front, you know, and kind of advertise it that way. But you do want to, if there's a way to relocate any municipal vehicles or anything, I know that's not easy, but parking is at a premium. So I think that's definitely something you need to consider, right? We would need to consider. You guys need to work on that. Yeah, Kathy?
I would consider...
Do we have insurance on this thing? Will it be in a place that there's some sort of security camera on it? Not for nothing, but I see, you know, what I'm thinking. I don't want to say it out loud or break it or, you know. Just one of those things.
Everything is provided...
Do we have cameras in the back?
We have cameras. I don't know if it covers that area, but we can discuss it more with the police department.
I think it should be... Well, we briefly spoke about it yesterday.
Yeah.
Does it get damaged? Somebody backs into it even? What happens? How's that all covered?
Yeah. We're talking about putting some ballards in the front of it. Past the curb, it's in the grass area. We could talk about putting some ballards around it, just like we do the kiosk in the back. So we're going to try to protect it. It is covered by insurance, of course. But we can look at cameras, and we can look at more ballards.
Okay. Pass this down, please.
Mayor, sorry. I was just about to see what the machine looks like.
Nina had also pointed out that in villages where this has, or in rural anywhere where it's... Where they've worked, that the business owners tend to like them, especially the restaurants, because it does give, I don't want to say an excuse, but, you know, for people that do have electric cars, if they know a place where they can go, charge their car for a couple of hours and go have a nice meal, nice dinner.
Right.
You know, it's something to consider that could potentially help downtown. I also thought that, you know, the LDC could... This could be an economic attraction for the village in bringing more people in. Maybe the LDC offers a little incentive to some of the restaurants. If you come, charge your car in Dobbs Ferry at the charging station, and you eat at a... The LDC could give help, you know, something like that. But I think you want to promote this. If you're going to go in on this, you really want to promote this thing. So what do we think? Good? Yeah. Any other questions for Marcus? Okay. I didn't see a resolution for this, so I think really just I'll look for a motion to authorize the expenditure of $1,000 for the installation of a charging station at the Village Hall parking lot, you know, as we've discussed. And I think that's really it. Is there a motion? Trustee Kay, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? Passes with six eyes. And we want to thank Nina and her Energy Task Force who do, you know, such great things in terms of the environmental initiatives. And Dobbs Ferry is really... We've really set our... This village apart, having won the New York State Bronze Climate Smart, the highest award ever given any municipality in the state of New York ever. And it's a direct result of the work of the task force and Marcus You and the staff and Betsy and Gary, and a very, very supportive board as well. So good work. Action item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the submission of the Government Efficiency Plan, GEP, as lead agency to the New York State Budget Office as required to meet the state tax-free legislation.
For the information for the board and general public, I submitted in your package a copy of a report. This is regarding the tax-free legislation as part of being below the tax cap, not accepting a resolution to override the tax cap. There's a third requirement, which is you have to show 1% savings of shared services for the current fiscal year and three fiscal years into the future. We worked together with six other municipalities, five other villages in the Sleepy Hollow. So it's total of seven municipalities work together to accomplish this goal. We produced a report that I think is a very detailed report, actually shows a lot more savings and showing a little bit what we've been doing without the governor's proposals and showing that we've been doing everything we can to share services. The whole board has a whole report on that. All the other villages, some of them have already adopted this resolution, have authorized to submit the report. And it so happens that we are the lead agency. I took that upon myself to be the leader for the other municipalities and the village of Dobbs Ferry. So all the other villages are waiting for us to approve this so we can submit the report as soon as possible.
That's great. We have the outline, and I would just specifically mention, just to fill in some of the details, but, you know, the initiatives that have really made a huge impact, including the LED street lighting replacement program, which has since expanded into some of the other municipalities, but Dobbs Ferry took the lead on.
They've copied us on that.
They've copied us, right. The street light maintenance, the pavement repair, the village officials committee, which meets regularly... We meet regularly with the other mayors and village administrators and managers, have saved literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in street paving contracts under a shared service contract arrangement, workforce reductions, we've talked about as part of our budget tonight as well, savings in printings and mailings, again, shared services. And some of these numbers have really added up particularly for Dobbs Ferry. So you've had to demonstrate that, and we can demonstrate that, a very, very good history, which will strengthen that request. So we have a resolution here then for the submission of the Government Efficiency Plan. I'll just read it here real quickly. I'll take a motion. But this is how the resolution will word, whereas New York State Legislature has enacted the property tax-free's credit, and whereas the village of Dobbs Ferry has opted to participate and agreed to act as lead agency, and whereas the 2015-16 budget for the village of Dobbs Ferry has been adopted within the allowable increase in tax levy and eligible to participate in the program of rebate by New York State, and whereas the village of Dobbs Ferry is joining with the villages of Hastings-on-Hudson, Irvington, Sleepy Hollow, Elmsford, Tarrytown, and Ardsley to prepare and submit a qualified Government Efficiency Plan, the Board of Trustees has reviewed and approved the portion of the GEP that applies to the village of Dobbs Ferry. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Dobbs Ferry approves the preparation and submission of the GEP to the New York State Division of the Budget, and will do this by June 1, 2015. And furthermore, that the mayor and trustee treasurer officer be and hereby are authorized to sign required certificates to accompany the submission to the GEP. That's the resolution. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second trustee Golio, discussion? All in favor? And that passes with six eyes. Great. And when will we get our checks back?
As soon as the state is ready.
Oh, man. Okay. Well, we've done our part, though.
Yes.
Okay, great. Action item number four, we took care of. Action item number five is to consider requests from Ms. Gabrielle Mason to have a block party on Mohican Park Avenue on Sunday, May 24, 2015. This will be from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's a big block party, right?
Yes.
And Chief, okay? No conflicts with that one? Great. So I'll take a motion to approve the request from Ms. Gabrielle Mason on the Mohican Park Avenue block party. Trustee Golio, second trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? Great. That passes with six eyes. Action item number six is to consider requests from the Jazz Forum Arts. This would be for $10,000 for the production of 10 Wednesday concerts and to authorize the hanging of a banner at the corner of Cedar and Main Street, and to consider a motion to authorize the treasurer to expend $10,000 to the Jazz Forum Arts in furtherance of the public-private partnership. I think everybody knows about the jazz concerts, summer jazz concerts that have been sponsored by Jazz Forum Arts and Dobbs Ferry for many, many years. And our great resident, our great musician, Mark Morganelli, that really puts all the bands together and organizes that. I actually saw Mark yesterday morning down at the train station. You know, he's very, very appreciative of the support of the village of Dobbs Ferry You know, he's very, very appreciative of the support of the village of Dobbs Ferry for this program. Many, many residents go to these shows on Wednesdays. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the village will not be able to accommodate the, the jazz program at the waterfront park this year. We'll talk more about that. I think we've, we've, we've mentioned the, the opening of the park, but we do need to be careful and to really restrict some areas of the park this year so that we can allow grass and sod and things to grow in. But the master school will be accommodating the Jazz Forum's arts jazz productions again this summer. And Mark actually was quite pleased with the venue last year. It seemed to work out very, very nicely right there along Clinton Avenue. And thinks it'll work out great this, this year, but is really looking forward to returning to the waterfront park next year, which we definitely will look forward to, all of us as well. But this is a great, you know, a part of a lot of things that we do, public-private partnerships, various forms of funding that we try to enhance the quality of life in Dobbs Ferry, whether it's culturally or ball fields or seniors or youth, and there's a lot of different ways that we do it. And this is one thing I think that's important that the taxpayers kind of like funding this one, so. Any questions about this or any, any issues?
You know, I had coworkers from Brazil here last year and it happened to be the weekend where Mark was featuring Brazilian music. And I could tell you in, in Rio, they know Dobbs Ferry because they were amazed that, wow, that, that this was a concert, it was free, and this is what you guys do. So, you know, it was really, you know, and I see he has the Brazilian music back on the schedule this year, so I just wanted to share that. Yes.
Great. Any other comments or, okay. So then I'll take a motion to, to approve the request from the Jazz Forum Arts for the $10,000 to be expended to the Jazz Forum Arts in furtherance of the public-private partnership. Is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, second trustee Casell, discussion. All in favor? Okay, that passes with six ayes. Action item number seven is to consider a motion to approve a request from the Dobbs Ferry High School football team for the football players to sell geraniums at the train station on May 8th from 4 to 6, 7 p.m. Football players selling geraniums? We got to go down there and see, see that, man. That's great. Anybody, I think we're okay with this one. I mean, the Girl Scouts sell the cookies and the, the football team sells the geraniums. Okay, great. I'll take a motion then to approve the request from the Dobbs Ferry High School football team. Trustee Kay, second trustee Golio, all in favor? Okay, that passes with six ayes. Action item number eight is to consider a motion approving an IMA with Hastings and Irvington for a marine unit and maintenance of a police boat. I think the idea was to table this because we understand that the other IMAs have not been put together. We have a few
Yes.
Questions, I think, chief, just kind of what's involved here. We can maybe go through it tonight if you'd like, just kind of how this came about, what your recommendations are, and then I think the board has some specific questions about usage and overtime, things like that, so.
Well, it shouldn't create any overtime. So that's a good thing. So I don't know if we want to, you know, backtrack a little bit. With the redevelopment of the park, the last marine unit, the last boat down there, I guess was referred to as unsightly and came out of the water and has been sitting on a trailer over at DPW since that time. The New York State Department, or I guess it's Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, listened to, to our story and they were gracious enough to offer us, through their vessel loaner program, a brand-new 24-foot justice boat. It's a twin screw. It's a vessel. It's $129,336. It's not even out of the shop yet. It's, it's still being built. So to us, it will be absolutely free. It would be a shared services-type program initiative with Irvington and Hastings. Dobbs Ferry, we have currently seven certified marine officers. Irvington has four. Hastings has two. They have one going next week. So they're, they're trained, they're outfitted. We have a brand-new boat. We have, we don't yet have a dock, but Tower Ridge Yacht Club in Hastings has offered a slip at their marina, free of charge, which is behind the bulkhead, which is a safe area for us. So if there were to be a call for marine services, the call-out would go to all three departments and whoever happened to have officers working at the time would respond.
So if somebody was in Irvington, they'd have to-
To drive to Hastings and get the boat?
Yes.
Yeah.
But at this point, Irvington, Dobbs Ferry, and Hastings have all redeveloped their waterfront within the last couple of years, don't have a boat, which seems kind of silly, especially when you have a fishing pier and you have a boat dock and you have beaches and-
So what do you just have, whoever, you know, qualified on-call? I mean, I don't understand how that works. Like if there's a problem on the water, the boat is always docked in Hastings at this point?
Well, at this point, we don't have dock.
Right.
So it would be in Hastings. And yes, whoever, the call would go out to the three departments to see which department had an officer, a marine unit officer, working at the time. And then officer would respond.
What do we do now if there's a problem on the water?
Well, it depends. Yonkers has a boat, so you'd be waiting for Yonkers. County has a boat in Tarrytown. Typically, I think county police and Rockland Police have been handling the security for the, for the new Taban-Zebridge. So they have been out there.
Is that why constantly manned in the Tarrytown boat? I mean, is it a patrol boat or is it the same thing? It's a-
Yonkers has a boat that's typically manned during the day and evening hours.
So would you take, but would this, would the boat be patrolling the waters constantly?
If manpower was sufficient, the boat could be patrolling, but that's not our plan, is to put anybody, if you're worried about overtime, that's not the plan. The plan is when manpower is sufficient, if Irvington has an extra officer, marine officer, working one day and we have one working, maybe the boat could go out for a couple hours on a, on a nice day.
No, not worry about overtime when it comes to public safety. I mean, yeah, that's something you've got to manage and that's a, that's a, that's a, that's part of the job, but yeah, I just, I think logistically, I just wanted to kind of get a sense for, you know-
Ideally, to have the boat docked in Dobbs Ferry would be, it would be ideal because it's right in the middle of both.
We are going to have a dock.
We are going to have a dock, but-
So that could be considered-
It's more of a transient-type dock. There's not a whole lot of protection for, for a vessel out there. So it's, it's on a blue-sky day, it's, it's a great dock, but not during a storm.
Do you think from a, like you mentioned, the development of the waterfront parks, you know, sort of up and down, but you know, certainly we've taken a, Dobbs Ferry's taking a very big step with a fishing pier and a, and a boat dock, so there's going to be a lot more water activity, kayak launch.
I think Matt, we've talked about kayaks and I know Hastings has some kayak activity at their park.
So you feel that there could be a real need? I mean, there's a real public safety, not, not concern, but it's something that we should be factoring in.
I think it's important and I think the, the fact that it's not going to cost any of the municipalities anything is, it's a win-win.
Just guess.
Okay, we don't know the status due or do we of the other IMA agreements?
Still being reviewed by the other-
Do we have some time to review this for a week?
We do. I think, I think the boat is probably not going to be ready for delivery until mid-June.
Okay.
So we do have some time. And I know Irvington had, they actually found a typo tonight. At about 10 to 7, they called me to say it said Aardsley and not Irvington.
Okay.
On it. So that just needs to be corrected. And there were a couple of other questions perhaps for Darius.
Well, it's, it's really great that you uncovered this and it seems like a really, a very, very good opportunity. We just saw it tonight for the first time, so I think if we can just think about it a little bit and, you know, work through the IMA and see the IMA and if any of the trustees have any questions for you, chief, they can give you a call.
It's a typical, it's a very standard, straightforward IMA.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Except Irvington, not Aardsley.
Thanks, chief. Okay, so we're just going to table that one and we'll bring that back onto the agenda the next time we meet. Thanks, chief. Item number 10, no, item number 11 is to 10, yes. Consider a motion to authorize the release of funds for facility repairs from the Recreation Fund in an amount not to exceed $22,000 as recommended by the Superintendent of Recreation. And I think Matt Arone is here. Thanks, Matt. Just give us a little background and some detail on this.
There you go. Good evening, everybody. I've been in discussion with Marcus and actually Jeff in the last few weeks. There's, there's about three or four pretty pressing situations we have with some damage. Most of it was actually done just because of bitter cold temperatures in the winters we've had the last two or three years. The most pressing situation that we're dealing with is damage to the structure of the Memorial Park pool. And the reason why I'm saying this is the most important is because our timeline, wanting to get the pool up and running and ready for Memorial Day weekend, which is right around the corner. When the winter broke and the ice and the snow cleared, parts of the pool are actually crumbling. Edges, corners, sides are actually crumbling. I had three companies come in and do a walkthrough with me at the pool. One was the pool company. Marcus had a good idea and asked to get the pool company that did Gould for us to come in. And I also got Tom Buchi and another company to come in to look at it. All three companies were concerned with the damage, saying that we can probably help you, but it's going to be a Band-Aid. You have, you have a pretty serious issue. I think the pool was built sometime in the early 60s or maybe, maybe, maybe mid-60s. Bottom line is, we need it to be either scraped or sandblasted, patched up all the cracks and all the breaks in the corners. I mean, if you put your, you could put your foot on the corners and it just, it wash, it just goes right away. That's how bad it is. So we need it fixed, repaired, patched up, repainted. All three companies gave me different ideas and quotes. I'm not sure which way we want to go. I'm looking for guidance and direction from you guys as well. The, the two, two of the companies thought this was going to be a very big job and they were thinking this is going to be over a $20,000 to $30,000 job to do it all. One company says that they can do it for significantly amount less, but I don't know if we want to go that route, but I, I think that with our time constraints, needing to get this up and running by Memorial Day, maybe something we want to consider. The job can be done in four or five days, so we can do it. If we're, if we can get this done early May, we can get it up and running for Memorial Day weekend, which of course is our goal. So that is, that is the most pressing issue I have, but we also have a couple other items that I want to discuss with you tonight as well. There is damage to the community center roof, flat roof, not the, not the curved roof. This winter, we had, due to the heavy amounts of snow, we had leaking into the back room of the community center. And we had to actually cancel some classes and programs there for a while. I did have some quotes to repair there. Had two or three companies come in already and look at it. We also have a swing set at Memorial Park that is damaged and there's four swings and we had to take two down. I just actually met with Compan, which is the company that did the playground for us at the waterfront and they're a very reputable company. They also are state contract. We have basically a swing set there, which is half, two swings, half-open and half-close. So we want to fix that as soon as possible. They are under state contract, so hopefully you can look at that. And the fourth item really isn't as pressing, it's not an emergency, but is important, is the fencing that protects the filter at Gould Park has been damaged a little bit. The weight of the snow and pressure, it's coming down in repairs. And I've had a, not, not too big of a quote from New Matt Fencing, who's here in Dobbs Ferry to look at that as well. But why I'm really here to, to explain these, these, these four issues with you guys, let you guys know what's going on and try to get some direction on, on how you want me to proceed and hopefully we can use the Recreation Development Fund for these items because these are unforeseen items, unbudgeted, emergency, and hopefully we, we can look at taking the funds out of that, of that account. If you have any questions, let me know and I can try to elaborate a little bit more for you.
Yeah, I have a question about the pool.
Sure.
So essentially it's a patch job or these bigger jobs that you said they, the people said that, the two people said they thought it was a bigger job. What would they be doing with the patch job?
What I think, at least I can, I don't want to, I'd like to think that Norberto, the pool company, I think because they're a pool company, they want to do it
Right.
Right. They want to do it as best as possible and fix it up as best as they can. Where I think the other companies are more like, we can patch this up and get it going for you and do their job. This Norberto company is a professional pool company, so, I mean, he was coming in, walking around saying, well, let's put a spray pool here and let's put a, let's put the mushroom here. I go, dude, I want to fix the pool. I said it's crumbling. I, we can't put a mushroom in right now. So I think that different ideas, that's, that's why I explained, some have more grandiose ideas than just fixing it up. I think with our timeline, we need a patch and we, we need water and that to be open by Memorial-
How long will that patch last? I mean, are we going to have to like keep doing it while if we go, the more expensive it will, will that like take care of it?
I, I, that's why I prefaced it. I, I don't think that any, any, any work that we do would last more than a few years to just patch up the cracks and what's breaking. And if we have, these winters, if they continue, this could happen again in a couple of years. Like I said, this pool, I think it says 1962. I think it was built somewhere in the mid-60s. So that's, that's-
Are we essentially looking at having to replace that pool?
Eventually, yes, eventually. I believe so. If we ever do, I would recommend what Norberto said, put a mushroom in there and a little splash pad for the kids. I just don't think that's in the, in the plans right now. We have, we have a little bit over a month to, to get that beautiful for the parade and Memorial Day and open for the kids for Memorial Day, so.
A lot of kids use that pool, right?
Yeah, that's very popular. That pool is very popular because it's private, it's got the shade. It's not intimidating where you have the other pool with the big kids jumping around, so they can go there and it's, that is a very popular pool. It's quiet and, and it's, it's well, it's, it's well attended.
Let's get a mushroom.
Hey, you want to get a mushroom, we'll get a mushroom. But I don't think, I don't, I'm not recommending that for this week.
Next year.
Yeah, next year we can do the mushroom, so.
So Matt, the cost year for the pool damage, you had a variety of quotes. This came in at the lowest price, I guess.
I'm hesitant to give my full recommendation because of what Donna said and Donna was alluding to, well, let's hope, but you know, I, I think it's the quickest and he, and this is a, this is a reputable company too. This is a recommendation I got from our rec chairman, Steve Gifford, who works with this gentleman, said does a great job. And he came in and he said, I think it was around $4,000. I don't, yeah. So, and he said he could get it up and running and we'd be all right for this year, so. You know, like I said-
The only, you know, only thing I see is $9,500 from Tom Buchi, right?
Yeah, Tom, well, actually no, Tom gave a different quote. I did another walk-around with Tom and, and he gave a higher quote. He did not think he could do the job sufficiently for that price. He gave a higher quote, $20,000.
Something, something we've been talking about is to, is to, we have a time line here, is to, I was talking to Matt, is to get the, get the patch done, get this year done. We have to sit down, go over the capital projects and then one of the items is, do we replace the same, I call it the waiting pool, because you know, it's a little bit of water for little kids, or do we want to enhance it and do more activities? But that's something that, we get this thing done, patched up for $4,000 and get everything safe to run this year. And then we can consider, do we just, just do, keep the way it is right now, or enhance the program? That's something we have time to discuss. So that's what me and Matt have been talking about.
Do we might get the mushroom?
If you want it.
Next year.
If you want it for next year, yes. So that's something that me and Matt and I have been talking about, so. He's very nervous because we want to get, because a lot of little kids use that pool and we want to have it up and running for everybody.
Memorial Day is important. The parade ends there, as you guys all know, the parade ends there. Has to be beautiful for Memorial Day. The monuments are there. That's important.
What is the final number on the memorial?
Well, what I'm recommending, I think I'm recommending, like I said, not, but I think, I think we should go with the, the Allstate, the quote from Allstate, which was for 3, 39 or something like that. 3, 3850, yeah.
We're missing, I think we're missing. It was on top of your folders. It was on top of your folders.
To answer trustee Golio's question, Tom did give an initial quote for nine and then I took him again for another walkthrough and he looked at it more closely and he, he agreed it was, it was, he needed to do a little bit more.
So the, the, one of the recommendations here is the community center, the roof leak.
Yeah, we, that one is important, but not as important because of the timeline and now obviously it's, there's no snow on the roof, but that obviously has to be repaired. The water was coming in the building. That would probably be my second or third priority on this list, the pool being the first. The roof and the swing set being second and third.
You hope the roof is partial or full?
It's a full, they, they have two quotes, a full, a full to be $10,000 or partial to be $3,000 for that, for that damage. That's a flat roof. We had the curved part of the roof in the main part building done probably 10 years ago, just before I got here. That hasn't had any roof leaks, but that's also curved, so snow would come off. The flat roof, as you guys would probably know, flat roof, snow and water stays on there and it's, who knows when that roof was done?
Would you recommend the full or the partial, really?
I would recommend the full. Yeah, I would recommend the full. Unless we are, like, as the mayor alluded to, unless we're planning on doing a big demo of that building or big reconstruction, which I don't know if we are, but I, of course, I would, I would recommend the full.
So let's take this from the top. Going back to the pool, so we're talking about either 20,000 or close to 4,000?
No, for the pool, you're saying either 9,500.
No, no, no. No, see, that's the thing. Yeah, this is the new one. So it's either, here. It's either the nine, they came back with now is 20.
Do you put this out some formal bid? Is that how this has to work or we just do?
Norberto, Norberto wouldn't even give a quote because they want to do so much extensive work. They wouldn't get it done in Memorial, yeah. They wouldn't get it done by Memorial Day weekend. Tommy Buchi gave us a quote initially for nine, then, then I brought him back and I gave, made him closer look. He said this is going to cost you over $20,000. He has it in writing. And the other one is from Allstate, has it in writing for 3,850.
I mean, that's, that was a very big difference.
It's a big difference, yes. That's why I'm not, I'm hesitant, but I think that is, like Marcus said, I think that's the way we need to go with the timeline.
It's a gamble, no matter what, but when they start cleaning, start sandblasting, trying to fix it up, the whole thing can fall apart. We don't know how bad it is. That pool was built in the 60s.
I know.
So our thing is, our thing is to, my idea, well, our idea is just to get it patched and get it through this year and then we can talk about doing a real replacement next year, as long as it holds, if it holds up to the repairs that we're talking about doing.
No, I understand. So of these three, what do you think? The lowest one?
Yes, both they, yes. We are, I think we're both agree, yes.
They said they want to scrape it. That's the wording they put in the quote. I think, I think there'd be less damage than a sandblast. And maybe that's why it's so much cheaper, to answer your question, why it's a big difference. So.
Do you know this group? Do you know them?
Yeah, they're highly recommended. Steve Gifford, my rec chairman, works with them.
They do this kind of work?
Yeah, that's what they do. Allstate Painting and Construction, they actually do pools.
Here's my next question on that, is if we're afraid that sandblasting might damage the pool further.
Mm-hmm.
Is that pool in danger of a child being hurt or something with, if something happens?
No, I don't think, no, once we cement it and patch it, it'll be okay, yeah. Yeah, there's no, there's no danger to any children when it was opened in the, in the summer, there is no danger to any children. This is literally, the, the ends are now crumbling into the pool. You could put your foot on it three times and it'll start crumbling and it, it's deteriorating.
Okay, so the recommendation is thirty-eight fifty to Allstate for the memorial pool?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what, what else are you recommending?
Um, the, the roof.
So, that's Memorial Park pool.
And I want to talk about the swing set too.
Yeah, I've got a lot of, I sent you an email.
Yes, I did, and I told you I was, I actually met with them today, yeah.
A lot of concerns.
Well, once the weather, once the weather, yeah, it's funny, you had four on there, we take two down and then it's the end of the world, but we need a new swing set too. Um, the price for the swing set, quote for everything soup to nuts, state bid, state contract, so it is low, is, uh, was fourteen thousand.
How many swings does that give us?
Four. We're back, yeah, we're back to the good number. And I can probably cut that with, save some money if we do, um, if I can get our staff to do a demo and remove the items ourselves, we could save a couple of grand. I could probably, I could probably get that even under ten.
Another question, do we have to use the state contract or is it cheaper to go out to private entities?
Well, maybe, maybe Marcus and Jeff can answer that better, but state contract u- usually is, is our best bet, but Marcus may be able to answer that better.
It might be cheaper to go out to bid, but then you have to go a formal bid by specification, go out to bid, go out for at least two weeks. So, the issue is the timing. Uh, state contract, no bids, you go right to, to the state contract.
Any idea what that cost differential would be? Do we have any?
I have no, I, I'm not a swing guy, I have no idea what that would be.
But does that include like protection on the ground?
Yeah, that includes, that includes the, the seats, the swings, the installation, the border around, um, the mat, on the bottom, like you said, um, and, which I think I could save money, removal of the existing and move over the borders and, and cleaning the area, which is another like four or five thousand dollars.
So, let's say we left everything there as is. We couldn't have just purchased two more swings to attach to the existing chair?
No, it's broken on the top. The left side of the, the left side of the swing set is broken. The bar is, the right side is okay, sturdy, because it's separate, there's a bar in the middle. There's a, so that's fine. Left is broken. We, we just took the swings down. I mean, in hindsight, we should take the whole thing down so people don't get upset, but we figured we leave the two swings up so the kids can at least have two swings. But it's broken, it's, it's, I don't even know how old those, those swings are.
You know, the only thing that I'm concerned about is, is not doing it right and then having to do it again.
Swings or pool? Talking pool? You went back to the pool?
No, I'm, I'm okay with the pool.
Okay.
It's the roof and the swings. Because the fence is the fence, right?
Fence is easy, I don't think that's an emergency as, as pressing as the other issues.
And the pool, we're going to go with the low bid, right?
That sounds, as long as you say so, that's, I'll make the phone call tomorrow.
So, now, if we did the partial roof and we did the low bid on the pool and we did the fence, we're up to eighty-five hundred.
Why do we have a decision tonight on the roof and the fantasy, boy, I think the pool and the swings?
Well, just to know what we're talking about, I'm just kidding.
I'm just saying from a focus standpoint right now.
Yeah, that's the direction I'm looking for. I, I need to know which, if, if you're agreeing with my priorities and, and you know, and I agree with Trustee Golio, I think the, the pool and the swings, I have to get moving on really quick. The weather is, you know, the weather is nice and...
And when you say replace the swings, you just replace them with just swings that were there, I mean?
Brand new, brand new.
No, 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 but who, what kind, who picks? You pick, we pick, they pick?
I already picked. It, the company that did the waterfront park, uh, Compan is, is camp, we did a walk around.
Why don't we just do these two libraries, okay?
That's, that's, that's fine.
Let's, let's, let's move on here. This is where we're spending way too much time. Um, so, I think we all agree on the pool, the pool work needs to be done, right? You got kids coming and a lot of people really, I know a lot of moms really like taking their kids out in the morning. So, okay, so the pool is thirty-eight fifty. And then the other item that we're going to do is the swing set? Is that what we're saying?
I, 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 I think that's, that's fair.
Yes. Yes, okay, and that's how much?
If I can get the company to submit a bid without the, if I can talk to DPW and if we can do the, the removal, we could, I can get it for ten thousand dollars.
Uh, go with the higher price.
What's going on? Go to a higher price just in case, not to exceed fourteen, and then we'll go to the lower number.
Okay, fourteen, the actual, the actual, on the, on the nose is fourteen zero nine zero, fourteen ninety. Not to exceed.
How many swings are on that set?
Four, same as we have now, same, same size.
I'm sorry, now you want to talk about swings, when I wanted to talk about the swings, you tell me what's taking so long.
It's thirty-five hundred a swing.
Thirty-five hundred a swing.
But they last the long time, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure the ones that are up now are at least forty years old. They're older than me.
Okay, well, that's a good point. I mean, there are legal requirements, there are liability requirements.
And this company, as Marcus will tell you...
And it all just pushes the price up to ridiculous levels.
Unbelievable company, yeah, unbelievable company.
Okay, um, so that's, those are those two items. That's all you need tonight for us.
I can proceed if, if, with your approval.
And you'll come back to us on the roof? We're going to have more...
We can wait a little bit on those, yeah.
On the roof and, uh, and this filter. The filter is not a...
It's a fence for the filter, yeah. We can wait on those, not emergency hours right now.
Okay. Does that make sense as the lead, you know, from a rec, from your standpoint too? Okay. Okay. We're good there on that one?
Thank you very much.
So then the, uh, okay, so the resolution, look for a motion for a resolution that will, um, I'm sorry here, uh, what are we doing here? To authorize release of funds for facilities repairs from the Recreate, this will be from, from the Recreation Fund, uh, in an amount not to exceed, um, let's see, we're going with fourteen thousand?
Ninety.
Nine hundred?
No, fourteen thousand ninety.
Forty-one, this amount's up.
Fourteen thousand one hundred.
For the swing set.
Um, five, nine, um, so that's seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, for a replace, for a new, um, state sanctioned swing set and repairs to the Memorial Park pool, um, which will be done by ulterior, all-state interior and exterior contractors as recommended and outlined by the superintendent of the, um, Recreation Department, Matt Aron. Any, any, uh, is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, second, trustee Russillo, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you, guys, I'll get working on it tomorrow.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Action on number eleven is to discuss a policy regarding donations for trees, benches, tables, et cetera. We'll move through this one very quickly. This is just to, uh, basically inform, uh, everybody that, and this has come up before, obviously ties into the new waterfront and some, um, you know, people wanting to donate, you know, for loved ones, whether it's a tree or a bench, and an opportunity that we could present, uh, that would also, you know, generate, obviously they pay for these, is to have a, a policy. We've never really had a, a clear policy, and we've had some issues where people have bought, or put trees in, that the village went ahead and did that, and then the trees didn't make it, and then the village got, uh, you know, a little bit of grief for that and, 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 and so, just to make it clear. So, you'll be working on a policy with the village attorney?
Yes.
With Darius, you guys will work on that policy and you'll, you'll, you'll touch base with, uh, Rec Parks and Rec and the waterfront committee as needed to, uh, to, uh, to create that policy that you'll bring back to the board and then we can consider and discuss.
Can I just ask one thing? Any chance, or maybe it can't be done, an opportunity to do this at the White Church Cemetery also?
I think this would be a, a policy that would cover the entire vill, all...
Oh, the whole village, good, okay.
Yeah, it would just be a general policy, whether it's the waterfront or, because that obviously would be another area for something like this, absolutely.
And then part of that is to then, like, list what's available, like, what areas are available?
Well, Marcus, why don't you, uh...
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're going to ask Bill Droney from the county, what, list down all the benches, the tables, the trees are, so we'll give them an inventory of everything, uh, what we have, and then if somebody wants to add a tree, we're going to determine where the trees could be planted and what type of trees, as recommended by the county and the arborist. So, we'll, all that will be part of the policy.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, action on number twelve is to consider a motion retaining the professional services of Mazor Consulting regarding traffic and roadway improvements associated with the Rivertown Square project, and this is an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand. This will be paid, well, essentially by the developer, which is coming out of the, uh, the building fees, right?
Correct.
Um, Marcus, just again, just to explain sort of why, why we're considering this or we need to consider this.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, part of, all part of Rivertown Square, uh, at the last meeting, we hired, uh, a couple of other consultants that were actually working on the project, and this is just to make sure what was, what was agreed to or what's, uh, was supplied as part of the approval process, site plan and recommendation that is done specifically to the plan that was approved. So, um, you got the proposal from Mazor, which Phil Greeley, who worked during the, the entire process, and this will just make sure that everything's according to what we agreed to.
Right, we do have that letter from Phil here, who's worked from the beginning on this project and, and works a lot with the village. Uh, yeah, this is important work to make sure everything is conforming, uh, and the roadway's being such an important aspect of what's going on over there in terms of what's happening. Okay, any questions for Marcus on that? Then I'll take a motion to retain the professional services of Mazor Consulting as outlined by the village administrator. Is, uh, trustee Golio, second, trustee, uh, Cassell, discussion? All in favor? Passes with six eyes. And, uh, action on number thirteen is to consider a motion to accept the payment of five thousand dollars to cover all outstanding temporary certificates of occupancy as of April twenty-eighth for the property located on three oh one Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've had some issues here collecting, uh, these fees, I, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, just to let you know, this is something that's, you know, that the, the owner of the property didn't realize there were outstanding, outstanding, um, temporary certificates of occupancy, so they came to the building department, they realized it was a number of years, so, um, they've asked to, to, um, have an agreement with the village to come out to a certain number. The village board, if they accept this, they actually have to supply the check, the money has been deposited, uh, we have to, have to cancel the check. So, that closes the, uh, this process for this individual and they can move on with, um, actually having a legal house at this point.
Okay, you're okay with this?
Yes.
It's all... Everybody okay with this? Any questions? Then I'll take a motion to accept the payment, uh, to cover all outstanding temporary certificate of occupancy. Uh, this is for three oh one Broadway. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second, trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? Passes with six eyes. Thanks, Marcus. And that's, that brings us to the end. Um, correspondence and claims acknowledged, receipt of two thousand and fifteen annual report?
From the library.
From the library?
Just to acknowledge your part on a yearly basis, this submitted annual report to the village board, just to acknowledge your receipt.
Okay. Um, let's move to the minutes. Uh, this will be for the regular, uh, meeting of the board of trustees for April fourteen.
I have something on page eleven.
Okay.
Mr. Serrano said any contamination...
Will be removed and this will be done by the developer? Should, is that what we should put in there?
Yes.
Okay, so we add by the developer, period.
Okay. Got a catch there? Anything else at all? Okay, looked good to me. Um, thanks for that, Vinnie. Then I'll take a motion to, uh, adopt the minutes for April fourteen, two thousand and fifteen as amended. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second, trustee Kay, all in favor? Passes with six eyes. Thanks. Um, couple of reports here. Um, one, just wanted to give a quick update, uh, from the village administrator and the treasurer on the auditor's annual report, which we received, uh, this was the year ended May thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. O'Connor and Davis, very, very detailed report on, uh, basically the village's budget process and the, the balance sheet at the end of the period. Uh, within that report, uh, there were some items that were pointed out that, um, the auditors just wanted to bring to the attention, uh, of the, the trustees and, and as part of their reporting function and policy, that there were some things in terms of the, you know, treasury functions that could, could be, could be improved. Um, and there were, were a list of them, some were, you know, very, 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 very little minor things, and most of them were, not of a serious substantive nature, but nevertheless they were things that were brought up by the, uh, auditors, which is what we pay them to do. And I just wanted to, um, you know, we, we had asked the village administrator and the treasurer to address those concerns and, uh, wanted you guys to report on how you're doing on that.
Sure, no problem. Uh, as soon as we received the report, um, oh, we submitted a report back to the auditors and back to the village board. As the mayor said, none of these items have any significance at all. These are minor comments to actually make improvements. I've actually encouraged the auditors that, I don't care how small it is, bring it up to my attention so we can make the situation better. Um, Jeff has the benefit of having seventeen years of experience as an auditor. Um, he took it a little bit stronger because he actually mentioned that it doesn't make any sense why the auditors put this stuff in there, and it's really, it's because we're any sense why the orders put this stuff in there, and it's really just because we're encouraging them to find any little thing that might become an issue in the future. So I would like Jeff identify what he feels about some of those comments that came up part of the management report.
Um, I just wanted to mention that none of the items are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which in auditor speak are a big deal. Most of these are informational, and we have addressed them, and, you know, some of them require ongoing maintenance and we'll continue to work with them.
Great, and, you know, I think it's a testament, Marcus, to you and Jeff that you addressed, got on this right away. I mean, we had a memo on most of it, Jeff had already been working on it. So, yeah, nothing was substantive, and as you said, in, in auditor speak. In fact, all of the ratings, the Moody's ratings, the Bond ratings, the report card from the New York State Controller's Office gives Dobbs Ferry very, very, very high marks. But even when you're doing a good job, there's always areas that you can sort of tweak and prove, and I want to give you guys credit for addressing that immediately, and it's just a testament to the great work you guys are doing. And we're not all perfect, and when we are given a report that says, hey, you need to tighten this up or that, you got on it, and it's going to be better for everybody going forward. So that's really great. Thanks for that update.
Yes.
Uh, update on waterfront park. Well, Marcus, you and I were walking around down there last week and a couple of mere crises that, you know, in any big project, you just, oh my God, you think you're getting there, and then all of a sudden something comes up, but we got past a couple of those. I mean, really where we're at right now, we have announced that the rededication date is Saturday, June 13th, 12:00 PM. We're putting a program together, we sent out, and I know a newsletter will probably go out this weekend just to, to notify the residents, but we're really looking forward to that day, hoping for some good weather, but we'll have a nice ceremony to rededicate the park, unveiling of, of plaques and, and, you know, some good words about all of, all the many people involved. We have, I think, made it, and I don't know, official, but the recommendations from the, the county and everybody that's been involved in the project and the waterfront committee have recommended that we really limit the use of the park, at least in terms of access to the, some of the grassy areas, particularly the north field, the, the great lawn up there and the, the middle part, just to allow the sod and the grass and everything to grow in. So we're going to have to, you know, communicate that. But the playground will be available, the pathways will be available, the fishing pier looks fantastic, and we hope that the boat dock will actually be in as well. That's what kind of the issues.
And the restrooms will be.
And the comfort station, right?
Yes.
We had some electrical issues as well, but you think we, we're sorting those out to?
Yeah, just at the board, now, I mean, we've been working with over 13 subcontractors on this project.
Wow.
That's what I have to deal with on a daily basis. And then we have an issue with MTA and Con Edison, which hopefully, I think, we got resolved this week in regards to, they actually, the MTA should be receiving, releasing a permit to Con Edison to do the electrical upgrade, and then we can have our electrician make the final connections. We were actually planning that in case it didn't happen, we were actually going to put a generator to test the lights and make sure that the restrooms are working. We actually were looking at that plan, knowing how everything was going, but I think we got that hurdle, that last hurdle crossed, so my fingers crossed, everything should be done. Hopefully, the grass takes time to grow, growing season, around the restroom, around the comfort station especially, they're still working that area, so it hasn't been totally seeded, so we might see some hay in certain areas, but I expect the whole waterfront to be done. Most of the plaques came in today. I encourage the board members to come by to the office, take a look at it before they leave. And it, it's, it's a big project, and I'm happy it's going to come to a closure in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Great. And I think we've also, that the high school is looking forward to having the graduation. We will be able to, to accommodate that for Saturday, June 20. Okay, any reports from any?
I have one. Could you pass these down, but only to trustees? Anybody else has to come to senior week to get one? These are from Abby. You got enough?
Yep.
Maybe we can give one to Darius. Darius, you want a bracelet? Jeff, you're in town, you have to come, Marcus, Liz, you have to come. There's one. Because senior week is the 11th to the 15th, and just some of the highlights, on Tuesday, there'll, there's something going on every day, every hour, but just some of the highlights will be a computer sign up, and on Wednesday, there'll be a Dixieland Band and Vendor Day and Flea Market. On the 14th, Thursday, there'll be line dancing and Zumba and Marjorie and it just goes on and on. And then Friday ends with a dinner dance that's being catered by Half Moon Restaurant. Those bracelets, by the way, are from the Losi family, and we'd like to thank them and Tony for everything you do all the time. And I have some flyers, Liz, I don't know if you want to take them to put up around? I took my share, okay.
Also, Kathy, if possible, the details you have for Vince on each day, if somebody could send me that, that'd be great, because I already posted it on the, on the website that it is senior week, so I'd like to list the items.
I know, but we're working on that.